Hey, everyone. Ms. Tanner, has this school board meeting been certified?
Yes, Madam Chair, on August 19, 2020. Notice was provided for filling all criteria VA Code Chapter 37.
Thank you, Ms. Tanner. I duly call this meeting to order. Okay, will you please take the roll?
Yes. Basin?
Here.
Campson?
Here.
Clanton? Clanton? Is he frozen?
Present, sorry.
You're fine. Jordan?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
And Martin?
Here. Thank you, Ms. Tanner. So, welcome, everyone. We're gonna start with our first item on the agenda. We're gonna hear from our administration about a plan for to transition from our current situation, which is 100% virtual learning, to possibly hearing the plan to transition into in-person instruction after the... So, that'd be the first week of, potentially, the first week of November. So, we're gonna... With that, I'd like to hand it over to Dr. Birdsong to begin the presentation.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair Martin, Vice Chairman Jordan, members of the school board, and members of our community. Thank you for the opportunity to share a few thoughts with you this afternoon. We are so pleased to be able to share with you today a proposed plan to return our students to in-person learning. As you know, considerations for the possible return of our students to in-person instruction are extremely complex. Please know that this administration is committed to providing the school board with all the information at our disposal to assist the board with their decision-making process and ultimately, a sound decision. As you know, the administration worked to develop this plan to return students to in-person learning since we began preparing for the virtual reopening. Even as we were planning for the implementation of a virtual learning platform for the first quarter of the school year, our efforts were not isolated, yet they extended into planning for subsequent grading periods beyond the first nine weeks of school. We've heard from many families who are eager to send their children back into our classrooms to learn in a more traditional way, hoping to provide to them some sense of normalcy. Contrary to this, we also have heard from many families who are reluctant to send their children back to school to resume in-person learning. We hope the information that we share with the board this afternoon will help all of our families to understand the complexities and challenges that face the school board in their deliberations. Of course, one of the drivers in the deliberation process is the health metrics of the Norfolk community and surrounding areas within our region. During the most recent school board workshop held on September 30 of last week, Dr. Demetria Lindsay, Public Health Director of Norfolk and Virginia Beach, reviewed with the board a variety of health metrics, and she also reviewed and discussed the trends of COVID-19 in the Norfolk community and within the region. We all found Dr. Lindsay's presentation to be extremely informative, and the School Division deeply values the partnership that we have with Dr. Lindsay and her staff. Any decision made by the board will certainly be dependent upon favorable health conditions and other pertinent factors and considerations that support students, teachers, and staff's safe return for in-person instruction. This afternoon, Dr. James Poole, our Chief Academic Officer, will begin our presentation and will review the proposed hybrid class schedules for pre-K, elementary, middle, and high schools, asynchronous classes, a proposed timeline to begin the phasing end of the return of our students, and professional development plans to support our hard-working teachers. Next, Dr. Gibson, our Chief Schools Officer, and Dr. Dennis Moore, our Senior Director of Student Wellness. He will review our division-level mitigation plan as well as the CDC's indicators or metrics for dynamic decision-making that the administration will recommend that the board utilize in making a decision regarding the return of our students and teachers to in-person instruction. Dr. Mike Cataldo, our Chief Information and Instructional Technology Officer, will then give us an update on the Virtual Scholars Academy and how technology will support both synchronous and asynchronous learning. And Rick Fraley, our Chief Operations Officer, will follow Dr. Cataldo and will provide information regarding bus ridership and transportation plans, building spacing and sanitizing, and meal service for our students. Dr. Poole will then review our communication and outreach efforts so we can stay connected and share important news with our families and community. And last, but not least, we will hear from one of our super amazing building principals, Mrs. Lithia Willie Clark of the Southside STEM Academy at Campus Stella, who will walk us through her school to share their preparations for the return of her students. We hope that you find this presentation to be informative and helpful. Thank you, Madam Chair Martin, Mr. Vice Chairman Jordan, and members of the school board. This concludes my remarks for this afternoon. I will now turn it over to Dr. Poole to get us started with our presentation. Dr. Poole?
Thank you, Dr. Birdsong. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Martin, Vice Chair Jordan, members of the board, and Dr. Birdsong. I'm James Poole, Chief Academic Officer, here with my colleagues, Dr. Gibson, Dr. Moore, Dr. Cataldo, Mr. Fraley, and Mrs. Willie Clark to review a plan for a return to in-person learning for Norfolk Public Schools. Ms. Tanner? This afternoon, we'll share a proposed hybrid class schedule, how asynchronous learning may look, the proposed timeline, continued professional development, current health metrics, our mitigation plan, information relating to the Virtual Scholars Academy, our operational plans, the communication plan, as well as a voice from the field. Returning students to school and maintaining social distancing of six feet between students as per CDC guidance requires the Division to follow a hybrid schedule with only half of the students in a classroom and on the buses at a time. Therefore, the proposed schedule breaks each grade level in half, and students would attend classes in person either on Monday and Tuesday or on Thursday and Friday. Students in elementary schools would see their teachers for in-person teaching two days a week, while secondary students will see teachers for two days a week. They would follow the A/B schedule and see each of their teachers once a week for in-person learning. It's important to note, this schedule will decrease the amount of live instruction for all of our students. Additionally, based on feedback from teachers for planning purposes and parents for reducing screen time for students, there is a need to offer a Planning and Professional Development Day at least once a week. Starting with our youngest learners, here's a sample of what the pre-K student's schedule for in-person learning would look like for the two days a week. This schedule closely follows the pre-K schedule prior to the March 13 mandatory closure. For our elementary students, their school start times will be staggered for transportation purposes, and they will have a structured schedule similar to the one noted on the slide. This schedule provides specific learning times for core instruction as well as resource classes and recess. Again, this is a sample schedule. As the exact times of the day students will participate in these learning activities will vary school by school and grade by grade. In the middle schools, students will follow their A/B schedule. Therefore, students will follow the traditional block schedule and attend for their classes on one of the two days and the remaining four classes on the next day. As you can see on this slide, blocks five and six may be longer to accommodate needed time to serve lunches with social distancing. The additional time in these blocks will be utilized for social emotional practices, silent sustained reading, and various group learning activities. High school schedules will be similar to the middle school slide that was just shared following the A-Day, B-Day block schedule. These schedules have students learning in person and asynchronously or independently each week. Therefore, teachers will be planning for live and independent instruction as the Division phases students back to in-person instruction. The next few slides demonstrate lessons that have been created by Virtual Virginia and are accessible for our teachers to use for independent instruction. As seen on this slide, the learning for biology is broken up into modules. The teacher would assign specific portions for students to complete independently during their asynchronous days. Once a student starts a lesson, all the materials they need are included within the module. Ms. Tanner, thank you. Each module includes information and applications for students to complete, where they can drill down deeper for more and more information. When they enter the application, the information is broken down further, and there is an assignment to complete. This week, ITRT, CNI specialists, and our coordinators participated in more in-depth Canvas professional development to assist in creating additional asynchronous activities for teachers to use. Additionally, Norfolk Public Schools has partnered with Alderman University on creating independent learning for students and using best practices for blended and asynchronous learning. This slide presents a proposed timeline if the board chooses to vote for to begin in-person instruction at the start of the second quarter. In an effort to reduce screen time and provide needed additional planning, professional development, and room setup for our teachers, we propose, beginning next week, to have all Wednesdays as asynchronous or independent learning times for students. Next, starting on November 4, the first day of the second nine weeks, begin in-person instruction on the hybrid schedule for our special education self-contained, English learners at Level 1 and 2, and case-by-case with Level 3, and all of our pre-K through Grade 2 students. This group of students would have their first in-person learning days on Thursday and Friday, November 5 and 6. After two weeks, we propose bringing back the remaining elementary students in grades 3 through 5, starting November 16, and all middle schools, starting November 30, and all high school students directly after winter break, starting January 4. This proposed schedule is only advised pending favorable health conditions and other pertinent factors that support students' safe return for in-person instruction, as voted on by the board. As students are phased back into school, those not slated for in-person learning will continue to follow the online learning schedule with Wednesdays noted as asynchronous or independent learning days. As stated earlier, we propose adding asynchronous Wednesdays to the current NPS online schedule through the hybrid schedule to allow teachers time for room setup, planning, and professional development, and to decrease screen time for students and allow them time to manage their assignments. Teachers have expressed the need for additional planning and professional development through the town hall meetings as well as within comments from the teacher survey that closes later today. The Wednesdays would provide time for teachers to plan, set up their rooms, reach out to parents, collaborate with colleagues, and participate in voluntary division-level professional development. The professional development would focus on planning for blended teaching, developing asynchronous learning modules, and specifically on Canvas. Since August 3, the Division has provided 19 division-level sessions on Canvas with over 2,250 attendees participating prior to school starting. Following the start of school, ITRTs have provided school-level sessions with over 3,700 attendees participating. With the need for such a dynamic shift in teaching and Canvas being muted teachers, there's still a large request for an increased opportunity for professional learning on Canvas. Whether or not the board votes for in-person learning, it's important to consider the needs of our teachers and students with implementing asynchronous Wednesdays starting next week. Prior to turning the presentation over to Dr. Moore, I'd like to pause for any questions the board may have.
Ms. Campson, and then Ms. Basin, and then Ms. Smith.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Dr. Poole. Very helpful. I have a couple of questions about our most vulnerable kids. I know when I brought that up, I was very concerned about our special needs children and our ESL children at the lower levels, 1 and 2. This is a different model than we saw earlier a couple of months ago, and I have a concern because the reason I was so... With the special needs kids are riding... They're self-contained, they're riding their own little buses to school. The teachers only have, you know, eight to 10 children with help. I'm not quite sure why we're not starting those two groups each day, excluding the Wednesday, which is a good idea. Why would that be? When they are no need... You don't have to do the splitting and stuff with the self-contained children. Why would they not be able to do all four days?
So, Mr. Fraley may touch on this a little bit later with transportation. However, when we look at the transportation routes and the bus runs with some of the wheelchair buses and the smaller buses, we won't be able to distance them properly on the bus, as well as some of those rooms are smaller rooms for our self-contained students in the classrooms. Some of them are, so it's something that we have to look at.
Isn't that illegal for us to be putting the children in smaller rooms? It always has been.
No, I'm not saying they're like in small rooms, but as you know, every room is not the same exact size across the Division. So, if you have a smaller-sized classroom in a school where you have eight students, that's where you would schedule the eight students in that smaller room.
No, but, okay. I'm very concerned about it. I would like to, you know, have that reconsidered. So, the children... The whole point of getting the most needy, vulnerable children in is to get more instruction that's effective for these... These are the groups that most... That benefit the least from online instruction. And now, they're getting two days and then five straight days of no direct instruction. It's all online and without the direct instruction that they're getting now. And for these children with these very small groups, when we split the classes, they're not gonna be... Each half will be about the size that this class is. So, that's something I would like to bring up for reconsideration. You know, I want to get the kids in as quickly as we can, too, but I don't want to do it in a way that's not safe or in a way that doesn't make sense. And to me, why this doesn't make sense? They have their own buses, they don't need to have their classes split. So, I would like... I'm not gonna, you know, beat it up, but I have a concern about that that would probably affect how I make a decision here. And I feel pretty much the same for the pre-K. I'm just not comfortable with either of those... All three of those vulnerable groups, the special needs children, the ELL kids, and our pre-K to two or three... I think you have them to two in here, and that's fine. That they're getting less than they were getting before in many ways. So, that's something that I'd like to see revisited. I know before, we had them in the morning and in the afternoon, so they had a half-day, but they were getting direct instruction every single day. So, I have a big concern about that. Thank you.
All right, we got muted. Ms. Smith, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I share Ms. Campson's concerns with the same concerns as Ms. Campson with the special groups. I also would like for Dr. Poole to go into a little more detail about asynchronous and what that means and what it looks like so the parents can have a better understanding of what to expect.
Absolutely. So, the asynchronous learning is where it's set up online already for the students to have all of the activities, all of the reading, any of the materials they need provided for them through Canvas for the students. The students would be given directions of how to log in, and there would be some new learning for them through each of the learning modules that they go. So, they would have independent time to be able to go through that at their own pace, whether it be when the normal class time would have been or the afternoons or the evenings. Those modules will be set up so that there's an introductory, a connect, and there's some new learning, whether it be through a small video or activities or a web quest or something different for the students to learn by. And then, there'd be a small form of assessment built in there as well to see how the students are doing, as well as, you know, an assignment for the teacher to be able to give them feedback. And then, of course, when they're there for in-person learning, the teachers will be able to reinforce those lessons face-to-face.
Will there be any instructor-led sessions with the asynchronous environment?
At this time with this schedule, there would not be any instructor-led sessions. But some teachers and some of them have videos, and a teacher may upload a video of himself giving some instruction, but it still would be independent learning. There wouldn't be any kind of a live learning portion to those lessons.
Okay. Also, I would prefer to see our most vulnerable groups being phased back in the classroom with consistent classroom time, not classroom time that's broken up. Also, if possible, I'd like for us to consider in-person and virtual that's blended that offers the parents the option of deciding which one they want to choose. And I don't know how that would work because it certainly would bring teachers back into the classroom. And safety is definitely important, so we have to look at that as well. But I think now that we have the capability and have virtual learning up and running and in place that we could possibly consider offering a blended approach with an option to the parents.
So, if I could ask a clarifying question, let Ms. Smith. So, beyond the Virtual Scholars Academy, which is the one where the students would stay at home, and the blended, the hybrid schedule that we proposed, you would like one that stays similar to what we're offering right now?
Yes, for... Does everyone get to use the virtual learning? So, with the hybrid that we're showing, are those... I'm sorry, not virtual learning, virtual scholars. So, the hybrid that's showing where people, students, go in two days a week and then three days asynchronous, is that the same as the Virtual Scholars Program?
So, Dr. Cataldo will talk more about Virtual Scholars later, but the Virtual Scholars was originally designed to be fully asynchronous. But he'll talk through that later on what we're able to do and what we're capable of doing.
So, what I'm saying is, with the proposal back to school, where students... We're bringing some in person. What I'm advocating is that we consider some kind of way that that classroom can also be taught virtual. The same lesson that's being taught in person can be presented virtually as well.
Okay, so I think I hear you. We are exploring some options for the possibilities of how to do that, but we don't have that at hand right now. Like, we could have a webcam in the room so the teacher could be doing live instruct at the same time when students are home. We're exploring those options, but right now, we don't have those in hand right now.
Okay. I would like for us to certainly consider that.
Okay.
Along those lines, though, we did have a presentation in February about the motion-censored video cameras. Would that be an option?
So, I don't know if motion-censored would be, but I think there are certain webcams with wide-angle lenses that may be. And I believe Dr. Cataldo has some of that in his presentation as well.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Ms. Basin, do you want to... Do you have a question still?
Yes, I do. So, touching both, some of the concerns raised by both Ms. Campson and Ms. Smith, I also am concerned about the hybrid learning model. And I just want to refresh. So, this model is being proposed based on the survey that was conducted of families back in June. Is that correct?
So, the hybrid model that's being presented is presented because of limitations for transportation and room space with keeping the recommended CDC six-foot social distancing.
Okay. So, not so much because of the survey, but because of being able to implement, fully implement the mitigation strategies. Is that right?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. So, one thing, you know, for consideration, and I touched on this last week when, you know, Dr. Lindsay was with us. But there is, you know, a great concern from a public health standpoint of the hybrid model in itself because you have, especially for our youngest students who may be in a variety of childcare settings. So, I think there would have to be either... I do think that we have to go back and, you know, perhaps resurvey our families because I do think that there are... And I know that there are families that, if we ask them, you know, anytime from August till now, they would probably make a different choice than what they made in June, number one. And number two is, I think, with the understanding of the potential health risks that are involved with the hybrid model, I think families would also make different choices. Coupled with the health piece, I think that... I believe that the inconsistency between the hybrid and the asynchronous doesn't provide an academic benefit to, you know, those students that really need that consistency, which is, you know, our equity and opportunity students, there's students with disabilities, even, you know, our students who haven't been engaged this whole time. I think, and in the spring, I think that we really need to provide an option that provides that consistency, not only for our students, but for our teachers as well. I would also like to see a survey our teachers. I don't know if you have a sense or what has been done to really assess our teachers' comfort levels with being in the classroom. Do we know that we have the staffing to support any type of in-person model? And if so, can you speak to that a little bit? Because I do think that's pertinent to making any type of decision related to our learning model.
So, as far as my understanding, we have not surveyed teachers for specifics on if they're able to come back or not able to come back. I think the plan was to do that following this presentation. And I just want to clarify, the survey for families, are you indicating the survey to be able to say, "I'd rather stay in the Virtual Scholars Academy at home" versus coming back at this point and allow that choice to be opened back up again?
I am. I am asking for that. And I don't, you know, not necessarily for Virtual Scholars Academy, but virtual learning as we have it currently, where we have that, the direct teacher-to-student connection, you know, in person, not in person, but, you know, that FaceTime, whether virtual or not, is critical for a lot of our students, for most students. And I think any way that we can enhance and expand on that, I think, would be important.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So, I do think that opening it back up to families and teachers would help us plan. I think, for me, that's a critical component to making this decision and had hoped to have that information to guide us.
So, I do want to be clear. Staffing-wise, we would not be able to accommodate Virtual Scholars Academy, a hybrid schedule, and the current virtual schedule that we're running because your teachers, when we come back to any kind of face-to-face, they have to be there teaching face-to-face, and they can't... They wouldn't be able to juggle all of that. So, I just want to be clear that, the staffing-wise, we would have to be able to hire additional teachers if we were to add a third program to what we're currently doing.
Right. And I think that's exactly, you know, to your point. I think that's important pieces of information that the school board needs to have and needs to have it in a, you know... We need to have a better understanding. I feel like we need to get quantifiable information, you know? Like, how many do we need? How many teachers do we need to execute this, you know, in person? How many teachers do we need for virtual learning or VSA? And I think that is the kind of information that I, you know, I'm speaking for myself, that I'm looking for to help make this decision, especially, you know, keeping in mind social distancing, keeping in mind all of the other mitigation factors that are at play. But, you know, again, I'm gonna round back to the other big mitigation factor is the type of learning model that we implement is critical. And the hybrid model has the potential to really, I guess, propel the transmission in the community if we're not careful about it. So, I think we need to really take that into very strong consideration.
Thank you.
I have a question, Dr. Poole, about... So, what if... So, if we have a lot of families who decide that they want to go to in-person, and we have capacity limitations, how are you all planning to... How are, how are you all planning to prioritize in-person learning?
So the reason for the hybrid schedule would be that we could accommodate. Any of our students who want to come in person, because we're splitting everything in half, basically. Um, with currently having six thousand of our students who have opted for the, the Virtual Scholars Academy. Um, that lowers our class countdown even a little bit more. But we're currently prepared for every, every student who did not select Virtual Scholars Academy. We can accommodate in this hybrid model to be able to come back face-to-face.
Okay, and I mean, we're, right now, we, we're talking about schools as if there's one, one standard schoolhouse and. And you'd mentioned earlier that that's not, in fact, the case, that we have many different sized schools and different, you know, ages and conditions. And so, um, I, I just. I'm wondering, um, does, I guess my question is. Does the, does that still apply to every school when you, when you say that?
Yes, I think, um, Mr. Fraley will get into that a little bit with his operations understanding. Because Mr. Fraley and Dr. Gibson have been working closely with building principals and other staff members. To look at classroom size and see what can be fit in there, um, uh, by school to ensure that we are prepared for an opening. Um, at the beginning of the second quarter, if that's what the school board chooses to do.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Mr. Jordan and then Dr. Gabriel.
Yeah, thank you, um. I think, um, Dr. Poole just touched on one of the questions I had, but. I think I'm gonna try to hold most of my questions to the end, because I'm gonna try to figure out how all the pieces fit together, but, um. I guess what I would like to do is before we get too deep, if possible, I'm just trying to get a sense of where we are, so. Uh, you know, questions I have, where are we, uh, where do we want to go? Uh, where do we want to be by when and was it, what does it take to achieve it? So, Dr. Poole, you just mentioned about, uh, uh, six thousand students that are enrolled in VSA. Um, you know, I like the, if you all can refresh the board as to what the. Promises and the commitments that we made there and how that has impact. Uh, you know, Ms. Basim, I think, raised the question of, of staffing. So if we don't have a sense of, um. You know, where we are with, with staffing, then, you know, that impacts, uh, in my mind. I don't know that every building is ready, uh, you know, just in terms of our. Ongoing facilities condition index, and if we need to do some extra things in order to get them ready. Then to me, there's a cost associated with that, so what would be the cost and how long would it take to. Brain those buildings, uh, uh, up, up to speed, at least in order to provide what you're providing. So I'm kind of just trying to get a sense, big picture wise of. Where you all, from an administrative perspective, feel we are, uh, operationally. And then even as, uh. Uh, thank, my colleagues have already kind of touched on, if we now find that there are parents who, um. Uh, based upon their own lot of experience, may want to choose in-person or those who. It may be more that want to go longer in VSA, just trying to get a understanding of what you all are hearing. From the ground and how that's factoring into your decision-making. And then moving forward, whether we're talking about hybrid model or any other recommendations. If you all could just touch on what some of the research, uh, that you've studied, um. That supports some of the recommendations that are coming forward, so I'm not expecting you to answer all that now, but I am trying to get a sense of. Big picture, where are we right now, just based upon, uh, what we have. Where we are today in the division and in, in the promises and the commitments that you feel we've made. As far as VSA or anything else associated with this initial nine weeks, um, process. Because I think that then will help me to determine, um, the approach as to, you know, what we need to do going forward.
And I think you will hear some of that later in the presentation, Mr. Jordan.
Okay, shall we proceed with the presentation then?
All right, at this time, I'd like Dr. Moore to take the helm.
Good evening. Uh, good evening, School Board Chair Martin, Vice Chair Jordan, Dr. Birdsong and School Board members. I will share with you this evening our efforts in implementing our Phase Three Health Mitigation Guidelines. As we prepare to open schools for face-to-face instruction. We are, um. We are re- reviewing the tools developed by the Centers for Disease Control in the Virginia Department of Health. These tools provide information about measured indicators associated with the COVID-19 pandemic. We have begun to review and monitor trends in our immediate locale as well as throughout the Hampton Roads region. Since our staff live in the surrounding cities, we have to, we have to, uh, keep track of all the cities, because our staff live in various places. The tools provided by the Virginia Health Department help us to examine the COVID-19 status of a city or region. They're helping us to develop a strategy for the safe operation of schools and other city functions. The slide under review, um, lists eight indicators to help us determine the impact of coronavirus on the region in Norfolk. These eight indicators are as follows. Daily case incidence rate, daily PCR test percent positivity, rate of outbreaks. Percent of cases that are healthcare workers, rate of visits to emergency departments for COVID-like illness. Rate of current confirmed COVID ICU hospitalizations, percent of hospital beds currently occupied. Number of hospitals reporting having trouble acquiring personal protective equipment in the last seven days. The metrics, uh, graphic also includes descriptors that help us understand the data, including burden and trend. Burden is a measure of the disease impact on a region, this is updated daily and provi- and provided through a seven-day average. The tool standardized the comparison of regions. The use of a moving average smoothes out variability and minimizes the influence of outlier data points. Burden is given a numerical value, value that can be divided into categories of minimal, low, moderate and high. Trend is a measure of how each metric has changed over time and eva- and evaluates the change over a fourteen-day period. Trends are then divided into the categories of increasing, fluctuating or decreasing. Next slide, please. This next slide, COVID-19 pandemic metrics, I'm going to talk a little bit about that. The Virginia Department of Health recommends that communities and schools use the CDC's. Uh, CDC's disease control indicators for dynamic school decision-making framework. To assess the risk of COVID-19 transmission in schools and to help inform decisions about school operations and necessary mitigation strategies. The CDC framework is best used together with interim VDH gu- guidance for mitigation measures in K-12 settings. To the extent possible, the CDC indicators have been aligned to the phase guidance for Virginia schools previously issued by the Commonwealth. To further inform local approaches. The VDH has, uh, created a pandemic metrics dashboard inclusive of a CDC school metrics tab. That includes the CDC indicators for dynamic school decision-making. The CD, CDC recommends that case numbers per one hundred thousand over the last fourteen days. And the RT-PCR test positivity rate be assessed as a primary indicator for community transmission. Uh, the recommendation is that when looking at metrics data, information from the community as a whole. Should be considered and not just information from a particular school or school, or the school division. The following secondary indicators can also be used to, to support the decision-making process in local communities. But should not be used as the main criteria for determining the risk of disease transmission in school. Those secondary indicators include, uh, the percent change in new cases per hundred thousand population during the last seven days compared with. Previous seven days, the percentage of hospital inpatient beds in the region that are occupied. The percentage of hospital inpatient beds in the region that are occupied by patients with COVID-19. And the existence of local, localized community public setting COVID-19 outbreaks. So those, those four are secondary, um, and should be considered, but the first two should be the prime. Uh, next, I wanted to talk a little bit about health considerations in Norfolk, this sort of piggybacks on the presentation that was presented last week by Dr. Lindsay. Um, I wanted to discuss some of the same points. Um, like I said, this slide mirrors some of the information from Dr. Lindsay, uh, who is the Norfolk Director of Public Health. Uh, there are many different factors that can affect a person's health. These factors include housing, financial security, community safety, employment, access to healthcare, education and the environment. These factors can contribute to significant levels of health inequality, including differences in life expectancy. One of the images on the slide indicates up to sixty percent of factors associated with one's health can be attributed to. Access to quality healthcare and socioeconomic factors. The other image on the slide suggests that life expectancy in the city of Norfolk can be associated to agree with the zip code that a person lives in. Developing awareness of these health concerns and Corona and, uh, the coronavirus's relationship to the issue. Is a necessary step when addressing the needs that MPS students and families present. Next slide. Okay, um, when the data is examined, it shows that minority groups, especially African-American and Hispanic populations. Are impacted by COVID-19 at dispor- disproportionately higher rates. This information is important because fifty-eight percent of MPS students are African-American and eleven percent of students are Hispanic. The pandemic's impact on the community can include reduced employment prospects, social isolation. A potential for increased trauma, less educational opportunities and a disruption to normal routines. Uh, sixty-three point three percent of the MPS students qualify for free and reduced lunch. Uh, socioeconomic concerns increase the risk of students and their families to be impacted negatively by COVID-19. Economic concerns that could impact MPS students and their family with regard to risk for COVID-19 infection include. High rates of unemployment due to the economic shutdown. Uh, lower-paying jobs that may be available but expose workers to the public and possible infection at higher rates. Uh, like examples of those jobs could include like retail, fast food, food servers, cashiers, home care. Health aides, they, they're just, they have a higher risk of, uh, exposure to people because they're working with the public. Uh, less access to benefits and healthcare. Uh, living in multi-generational homes where grandparents and older adults in the home are at an increased risk for exposure and infection. And, uh, reliance on public transportation and, and, and with it, potential COVID-19 exposure. While the more affluent can ins- insulate themselves to a larger degree from risk associated from COVID nine, with COVID-19 infection. Those that are experiencing socioeconomic challenges may not have the same opportunities to do so. It is important that the division proactively addresses the needs of the students that we serve and take into account these challenges and barriers that they are confronted with. Um, Dr. Gibson, I think, is going to present information on the next slide.
These are the metrics from the Center of Disease Control that guide decision-making. As school board members use these guidelines to determine when to open our schools for face-to-face instruction. Our building administrators and staff will be planning and preparing to ensure all students and staff. Implement the five key mitigation strategies consistently. All students and staff will wear masks, all students and staff will consistently practice social distancing of six feet in all classrooms. During hall transitions in common areas such as the cafeterias and gymnasiums. All students and staff will practice healthy hygiene. Hand hygiene will be supported through sanitation stations and bathrooms that are equipped with soap, water and paper towels. Cleaning and disinfection will be scheduled routinely and diligently throughout the school. Contact tracing will be done in collaboration with the local health department. When someone gets sick, we will be sure to follow procedures that support stoppage of widespread contamination. In addition to preparing our buildings and ourselves to be ready to implement and to follow the five key mitigation strategies. The communications department has provided links on our website to give all stakeholders access to daily updates. Regarding COVID-19 cases in our city and region. You can find updates on our Norfolk Public Schools website, when you go to the website, click on coronavirus updates. And then click on Norfolk Health Metrics.
I'm gonna take the, the last slide. Um, in our preparation to reopen schools for face-to-face learning, we have shared a guided preparation checklist with our principals. And are working collaboratively with all departments to ensure precautionary measures are consistently implemented. In each school and that all buildings are ready to receive our children and staff. Orientation, orientation and training for staff, students and staff specific to COVID-19 mitigation strategies. Has taken place at the beginning of the school year and will be provided again when staff and students return to the building for face-to-face learning. Appropriate PP equipment has been purchased and distributed to schools and departments. By the time that schools open, multiple medication administration designees will have completed training at each school facility. So the backup staffing is available to provide services to students. When a student or teacher presents with COVID-19 symptoms, plans to communicate an outbreak or positive case detected in school are already in place. The school nurse or the person who receives the concern will immediately notify the building principal of any suspected case. And the building principal will initiate, initiate reporting by contacting the executive director. The principal will send an email that automatically alerts Dr. Moore, myself, Nurse Supervisor Lewis, Human Resources. The Department of School Leadership and the Media Relations Department. Principals will also contact the Chief Human Resources Officer to report illnesses and/or deaths that have occurred. Um, in a building related to COVID-19. Uh, staff, student notifications of exposures will be handled by professionals in the Student Wellness Department. And their local health departments associated with the impacted person's home address, that would be the contact trace. Uh, the Media and Communications Department will lead district efforts when responding to media inquiries and public dissemination of district messages. All parties involved in the communication of an outbreak information, of outbreak information will follow laws and policies associated with privacy concerns. At this time, Norfolk Public Schools is not planning to use apps or devices to track the vital signs of staff and students. Before learning, leaving school each day, staff and students must pre-screen by reflecting on the following questions from the. Daily COVID-19 pre-screening questionnaire. Those questions would be, are you currently ill or caring for somebody that is ill, it's a yes or no question. To your knowledge, have you been significantly exposed to another person that has tested positive for the coronavirus, yes or no? Do you have any of the following symptoms, yes or no? And those symptoms be fever or, or feeling feverish, which is a hundred point four degrees Fahrenheit or higher. Uh, chills, sweating, shortness of breath, cough, fatigue, new loss of taste or smell. Diarrhea, sore throat, nausea, vomiting, muscle or body aches, headache or an unexplained rash. Students, parents and staff must be diligent on a daily basis in monitoring their health. Parents will be expected to monitor the health of their children and report concerns to appropriate school personnel. The daily COVID-19 pre-screening questionnaire, um, it, it either is or will be very soon available for viewing on the Norfolk Public Schools website. Students and staff members must not report to school when they're sick, but should notify their school of potential concerns. In summary, administrators and staff in the schools, in the Department of Student Wellness, in school leadership development. And in school facility, and in school facilities are working together to prepare our buildings so that all students and staff receive a healthy, safe. And welcoming return to school for face-to-face learning. Thank you for your time, after some questions, we will return the presentation, we will turn the presentation over to Dr. Michael Cattalo. Thank you.
Dr. Gabriel.
Thank you so much, um, I'm going to go back to the, um, first segment of the presentation. Because there were just a couple of things that I, I wanted to, um. Ask some clarifying questions on, um. Dr. Birdsong, when you have proposed this hybrid schedule. Um, you are taking into account transportation, class size. With the resources that you have right now, uh, you know that, um. Would we be able to bring in the self-contained children, the pre-K through second grade? And the ELL students for five-day-a-week instruction?
Based on the resources we have now, based on our staffing model. Um, we actually, um, this, uh, hybrid schedule was devised. Based upon the resources that we currently have. Certainly, we would want to bring children, all children, in for five days a week for instruction. But, um, in order for us to follow CDC guidelines with the six feet, you know, social distancing. But in order for us to follow CVC guidelines with the six feet, you know, social distancing and, you know, on buses and classrooms and all of that, it is just not feasible. And that is the the primary reason why we have, I would call it kids into two different groups or or families as we refer to them, such that, you know, half the children come on Mondays and Tuesdays and the other half on Thursdays, Thursdays and Fridays. And again, this is based on the resources that we have. And then if the question becomes, well, can't we just hire new teachers? From where will we get these new teachers? I know that all surrounding school divisions, you know, have vacancies that they're currently trying to fill. So staffing will continue to be of concern. I will also share that it's my opinion that once, realistically, that once we return to in-person instruction, even teachers who will commit now to going back into the classroom physically may make a decision that, for whatever reason, they don't feel safe. And of course, Mr. Phillips and his team have already been working on protocols and and such to address that. So the the schedule is a result of deep collaboration, many, many conversations, planning for a very, very long time, and and this is where we land. One area that we can perhaps go back and take a deeper look, but I I I feel pretty confident with with our planning efforts so far and and what we've been able to determine, it's that even with with special education, I would like to go back and and look at that a little more closely, especially in the self-contained area, to see if perhaps with classroom spacing and 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 transportation, you know, if if that's something that's more feasible. But having all of our children come to school every day, all day, under these conditions, no. So this hybrid plan is a result of 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 thinking about our facilities and thinking about transportation and other operational considerations. So I do appreciate that question.
And and I really want us to really understand, I I know you opened up saying it's complex and there are rate-limiting steps to what we can do. And I know in other divisions, when they had spoken to parents, they asked, you know, can you drive your students to school? In Norfolk Public Schools, we might not have that luxury. And so we are depending on a majority of our students to have bus transportation provided. And I thank you for acknowledging Ms. Camson's request for looking at the self-contained students. I I think we can probably do something, well, it's it's totally in your wheelhouse to do that, but I would definitely support and and encourage that because I can see how those students would tremendously benefit from that, and they are contained. And I'm not hearing from the division that that you don't want to go to a five-day-a-week, even with, you know, certain limitations, but you're just limited based on the DC guidelines and recommendations. You're being pulled from a safety standpoint, but at the same time, this is what you have as far as your 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 resources.
You're absolutely correct.
Okay, um, I would like to acknowledge the fact that you all did take into consideration some of the teacher requests for the Wednesday or a day for planning. I know that that was a a big suggestion that was brought up by teachers. And then as far as the PPE goes, can we be clear to the public that there, it sounds like there is very clear processes and protocols for the availability of PPE for every teacher, for every child that would come in. Even if they do not have the resources at home, they will be provided with a mask and with clean running water, soap, paper towels, all of that in the building.
Absolutely, but but please also know that we would want a child to have a mask on before they get on a school bus. And so we we certainly need our parents' support with ensuring that that happens. But as it relates to PPE, yes, we have ordered tons of PPE. It has been delivered to schools. I've been assured that we we have enough on hand right now. And if there are schools that are in need of PPE, that has not been communicated to me. But there's certainly enough for us to provide what is needed for children and staff to be safe. And I know for certain that Mr. Fraley is going to give you more specifics in his operational debrief.
Okay, thanks. I'll I'll hold the rest of mine for later. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Bassin and then Ms. Smith? Oh, and I'm sorry, Ms. Camson, I didn't see you there.
Ms. Camson, you might have had your hand up before me. If you'd like to go ahead before me, that's fine.
Thank you, Ms. Bassin. This should be real quick. I I have a little concern about if someone, and and maybe I missed it, so I need, I guess, to ask Dr. Moore, and maybe I missed it. When, if a child comes in, are we taking their temperatures as they come in?
Not.
Mr. Dr. Moore?
Not currently. We're asking that the parents, we're gonna communicate this to the parents, provide information on the website. But there's that checklist that I went through. We're asking, we're not asking them, we're expecting them to to take a look at that checklist, go through it with their family, with their student, and if there's an issue with them having a fever or any of the symptoms or any of the questions that are asked, that they contact their their school and and not attend school.
What if they don't have thermometers working because they can't afford to buy them? Or what if, as some parents have always done, they send their child even if they do have a temperature? What would, how would we be able to handle that if we're not doing a check ourselves?
Well, one of one of, and Dr. Gabriel may be able to speak to this a little bit, but my understanding is that that the temperature isn't necessarily a super great indicator of COVID in in younger kids. And 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 maybe Dr. Gabriel can expand on that, but that was my understanding from the reading that I've done and and that the CDC is not recommending that the temperature checks be a daily occurrence. Now, that's not to say that we couldn't do a spot check if we were having a concern or or a classroom. There was an outbreak or something or a random thermometer check, but a daily temperature checking would be just very time-consuming with limited benefit.
And thank you for that. And and one quick, one, oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Birdsong, go ahead.
Miss Camp, I was just gonna share that Dr. Moore is correct. The CDC doesn't recommend the taking of temperatures of every single child, which is why we are expecting our parents to make sure that they're going through that checklist with their their children every day. And you're right, well, you know, unfortunately, sometimes, for whatever reasons, and it's not with judgment that a parent may feel inclined to provide, you know, to give their child Tylenol so they won't present with a fever and they come to school. And even if we took their temperature coming to school, we wouldn't be able to detect that they they had a temperature. We will and have been providing training for teachers so that if there are certain symptoms that children are presenting with, those children will be sent to the nurse to be assessed. And of course, we're going to treat our children with dignity and respect and make sure their privacy rights are are maintained and all of that. And in addition to that, in terms of feasibility, I I'm thinking about Norview High School, who has almost two thousand kids. We would be checking temperatures from seven o'clock until two o'clock with with social distancing and having the kids to come in one by one. At at the end of the day, it's not a best prac- a best practice in accordance to what we've reviewed.
Okay, and just one last quick.
Symptoms, we will send them to the nurse, Ms. Campson, to be assessed.
Will there be an isolation piece for for suspected people? Whether it's a staff member or a student as the day goes on and and someone might be starting to present with symptoms, would that, where would they go?
Every school should have an isolation room identified.
That's exactly what, all right, that's that's exactly what I need to know. And 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 the teachers that will be wiping down desks will be supplied with all the supplies they need. We will not have to have our teachers buying wipes or disinfectants or anything to keep their rooms clean. Is that correct?
You're absolutely right. And I don't, okay, do you recall the video from last week? It was Dr. Moore who was in the warehouse.
I know, I saw him. The white. I was very amused.
Certainly, Ms. Campson, don't expect our teachers to buy PPE.
It was a, it was a concern I kept hearing, so I just, now that we've said it, they should be fine. And Ms. Bassin, thank you very much. I'm I'm all done.
Okay, no, you're welcome. Well, you actually touched on some of the things that that I wanted to raise. But going back a little bit to the to the first part of the presentation again. So, you know, Dr. Birdsong, you mentioned that this learning model was due to, you know, the staffing model and a review of the facilities and all that. Can you also describe, like, did you also consider, or you and your team, did you consider, you know, creative use of spaces, like thinking about outdoor spaces or, you know, other spaces where we might be able to, you know, keeping social distancing in mind, but but still be perhaps being able to utilize more space outside where the air is blowing and where we could possibly use, you know, maybe our long-term substitutes to self, to support, you know, the teacher in the classroom or paraprofessionals, you know, other staff that might be able to support a teacher. Can you, could you speak a little bit more to that?
That's a, that's a great question. We we did talk about outside classrooms, but we also talked about that not being a consistent place for instruction due to weather conditions. It could rain that we didn't expect, or it could be, you know, have a thunderstorm or just not be safe for a variety of reasons for children to be outside. So it, we would want to schedule a class outside, just not knowing what the weather conditions would be like. But please know that building principals are being very creative and and making sure that we have, you know, adequate space to bring in the children that we plan to bring in.
Okay, all right, thank you. I I know there's been a lot of people asking about, well, are you talking, you know, are you thinking about, are you thinking more creatively about using outside space?
We have.
And so, yeah, so I appreciate that. So back, so now back to, you know, the health protocols. I think, you know, as you, and tying it into staffing, I think, you know, having clear and concise health protocols in place for families and for our teachers and staff is critically important because that that obviously influences your your sense of safety in the school building. And so right now, what I'm hearing is that the, you know, that our families and our and our teachers and staff aren't seeing a lot of that. And you know, even, you know, I would like to see that as a board member, you know, also see exactly, you know, what our screening protocol is gonna be. You know, Dr. Moore, you talked about, you know, that this is gonna be, you know, really relying on families to, you know, do their own self-assessment of whether, you know, their child may be exhibiting some symptoms. And I I guess I'm I'm still going back to, while, yes, I've seen some of the the research on the the temperature checks, I also see that every doctor's office that I've been into, you know, does do temperature checks. And I think that's while, while there could be somebody who's COVID-positive come in who does not have a fever, it does still, it still is a gateway for those that do have a fever that, you know, we might be able to catch before they expose other people. So I do think that's an important piece. But aside from that, the the rest of the screening questionnaire, I've seen other districts have an app or, you know, I think, I think some of our students are doing it currently for sports practices where they have to complete information before they come to practice. So I I'm wondering why we are not doing that before coming to school. Could you expand on that?
So our our athletes are currently using an app, and I know there's an associated cost for that. But I also know as a best practice, some other divisions are helping their parents to to do an assessment before their their children leave home, leave home without having to do that through an app. So if that is something that the board would like us to continue to explore, we're happy to do that. Well, there's, I'm sorry. Mrs. Bassin, about the communication piece, it is so critically important. And we've talked about creating some videos that we can share with our families, you know, about mask-wearing, social distancing, and all of those things before, you know, we actually bring back our children so that our families are fully aware of what those expectations look like.
Right. And and in addition to that, you know, even seeing like a flow chart, you know, of of once you identify a case among a student or a staff member, what is the process? So I think seeing like a flow chart of of what the steps will be, I think would, even to the point, you know, okay, once a case is identified, or do we have an isolated isolation room in any school building where our students will be contained until they can get, you know, to get the care that they need? You know, what the process will be, I would like to see, you know, more description and information provided to our families and our staff along those lines as well. But personally, going back to your question that if the board, you know, were to decide that we do want to do an app or some sort of, you know, where we can say, yes, you know, this person checked in this morning and did not, you know, self-report symptoms, you know, we we would have that record, which might actually help with contact tracing as well. So it's I personally will advocate to do that, just as our athletes are doing it currently. And if there are costs associated with it, I'd like to know what that cost is so that we can have that in place before we we begin to bring students back to school, students and staff.
And and I, we can certainly do that, Ms. Bassin. And we also need to consider, you know, what happens when families don't complete that assessment before sending their kids to school. We certainly wouldn't want, you know, to turn a kid, a a child around because that, you know, that that app wasn't completed. So it would have to be a process that, you know, we would would have to consider putting in place in the event a family doesn't complete it.
Right. And I think that's a consideration for a lot of our mitigation strategies. What if, you know, there are children that don't comply with our social distancing guidelines? What are, what are we gonna do with children who don't comply with mask-wearing or staff members? I mean, there, these are all things that we have to have clearly identified what the, what are, what are our actions going to be when these things are not adhered to? And so I think that's, that's a fair question for a variety of different things that we're we're gonna be putting in place. So, you know, that's something I'd like to see as well.
I'd like to say something about the app, though. I mean, the COVID Wise app is be, it's free, it's, you know, has the the screening questions.
But it's not real time. Yeah. I mean, it's it's it wouldn't get to the, sorry to interrupt you, but I don't think it would get to the schoolhouse in in that manner, like, for immediate, you know, action around it, which is what's different about it.
It's also something that is in the community. So if they're, you know, as far as contact tracing, they get, you know, they can, it identifies other people that they've contacted if they report positive.
Right, for that reason, I think it's great, yes.
Yeah, I I think it, because, you know, again, we are the community. There's no separating NPS students, staff, or teachers, or anyone. We, you know, we we reflect the what's in the community. And so if it's in the community, then we're bringing it in our schools. And I think that if more, a broader population outside of NPS is using the COVID Wise app, that we could, I I'm just wondering why we wouldn't encourage people to download and use the COVID Wise app? And and I don't know, Dr. I mean, maybe this would be a question for Mr. Cloud, but I don't know that we, are we even allowed to? Do we have the authority to require anyone to self-report? If they're, if they're, they've been, I mean, how is that contract, I guess that's my question, how would contact tracing work if we don't have the authority to require people to self-report?
Well, we we already have strategies in place now for for contact tracing and I'll work with the with the Norfolk Department of Health with Dr. Lindsay and her staff. And so when they become aware of a positive case, they immediately start, you know, putting things in in place to identify those people that have had immediate contact or not. And and that's done, you know, as often as as needed. So we do already have procedures in place that address contact tracing.
So if I'm understanding you, it begins when Dr. Lindsay's department So if I'm understanding you, it begins when Dr. Lindsay's department finds out about a case?
It's when it's, Dr. Moore, you want to give the specifics since you work with this daily?
Yeah, typically, a case will, the principal will find out about a case, or supervisor will find out about a case. And they'll take that information. And as I, as I indicated in the presentation, that, that information is sent out to certain individuals in the division that have response, responsibility to somebody reporting COVID. And so they, they might have, something might be sent to facilities where they come out and clean the building. We have a few contact tracers on staff. And we do contact tracing ourselves, Norfolk Public Schools employees for Norfolk Public School employees and students. Now, we don't do community tracing. We will get with the Public Health Department to help them with stuff that's going on at the, at the Walmart that they may have visited. But if, if a student or a staff member is, presents with either a sickness that could indicate COVID or a positive test, then we go into contact tracing mode where we will get the information of, of the individuals that they interacted with. And we will call them up and speak to them and ask them about any symptoms that they may be having, any behave, the behaviors that they're interacting, doing when they're interacting with others, such as wearing their mask, staying six feet apart, washing their hands, how long they've been around people. And we use that information to develop a level of risk to determine, I mean, if they're low risk, they weren't around the person, they're wearing their mask always, they, they wash their hands, they stay six feet apart, then we, we determine that they're a low-level risk and, and we're okay with them coming back into the building. But if they're at a moderate risk, or I'm, I'm not, I'm not wearing my mask, or I'm not staying six feet apart, or I'm not washing my hands, then we start to ask them about that in more detail. And if we find that they're at moderate risk, then they could be sent home for quarantine. Now, like you were saying earlier, we do rely on the truthfulness of those individuals. So as a contact tracer, we are, we sometimes have to sort of be counselor, therapist, investigator, all rolled up into one, trying to find out the information we need to make an appropriate decision. But we have a protocol in place that's, that's written, that we follow, and, and, and forms that we use to address contact tracing.
And just to be clear, we do this under the guidance of the Norfolk Department of Health with Michelle Burnett, who's the epidemiologist, okay? Just to be clear. And also, if you want more information, we share with the board our health mitigation plan. And I believe it starts on page 12, and that outlines the procedures that, that we utilize when we expect or suspect that a person has been exposed to COVID-19.
And in that, it also includes the isolation protocols that were talked about earlier.
Thank you, Dr. Moore.
Ms. Bassin, and then Dr. Gabriel.
That's okay, I'll defer to Dr. Gabriel.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Ms. Bassin. All right, let me just put this out there for everybody who is watching right now. Teachers and parents and students, in order for us to come back to school and to stay in school, we all need to do our part. That means that parents are going to have to be extra vigilant about the signs and symptoms that their children are having. Parents are guardians. Teachers are going to have to be vigilant about looking at children, realizing their own signs and symptoms. We are going to have to positively reinforce mask wearing, hand washing, all of that. We are going to have sick children come in. We are going to have cases of not just, you know, hopefully we do not have coronavirus, but we are going to see flu and rhinovirus and all of that. Case in point, I just took care of a kid who rode the bus to school, got to school, didn't start feeling ill until the end of the day, but he was kind of feeling a little, you know, not so well at the beginning. And so these things are going to happen, but it's going to take everybody to help in this situation so that way the kids can stay in school. That's it.
And we encourage families, if they have a question and they're not sure, please give us a call and ask. Ask the nurse in their building, they could contact me, you can contact our nursing supervisor, Shelley Lewis. We're, we're here to help if they have a question and they're not sure. We'd rather them be extra cautious and ask rather than just send them to school.
Mm-hmm, right. Ms. Bassin, go ahead.
Yeah, so speaking of nurses, do we have a full-time nurse in every school building right now?
Yes, at this current moment, we do. Yes, we do.
We have a full-time that's dedicated to one school?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, okay. All right.
Thank you. I'd like to go ahead and continue with the presentation at this point. Who's up next?
Okay, that's me. Thank you, Dr. Moore. Good evening, School Board, School Board Chair Martin, Vice Chair Jordan, Superintendent Dr. Birdsong, and School Board members. Tonight, I will discuss the Virtual Scholars Academy changes as we discuss a plan for a face-to-face blended instructional model for the school division. The Virtual Scholars Academy has always been planned to be an asynchronous instructional model academy, just like Virtual Virginia is asynchronous and most other virtual schools as well. The Virtual Scholars will work asynchronously each week using all of the tools and instructional materials found in Canvas. All K-12 Virtual Virginia courses currently have complete instructional modules and instructional videos for teachers to use and access. Additionally, videos and instructional materials on specific topics are easily searched for in Canvas during lesson planning. The Virtual Scholars will be provided with live Zoom support for their teachers, from their teachers, during the Wednesday planning hours as requested. And students will have access to videos created by their teachers during the week for all, for all of the students really to be able to access. We are currently exploring opportunities for having wide-angle cameras in class during live face-to-face instruction to provide support for students at home. Our Virtual Scholars will have multiple opportunities for synchronous instruction during the week. Teachers will continue to use Canvas and Zoom to record lessons for Virtual Scholar Academy students, learning asynchronously. Teachers will have, have had extensive training in Canvas and Zoom protocols and best practice for a safe and secure learning environment. As stated before, all K-12 Virtual Virginia courses currently provide instructional videos throughout the course. And our curriculum and instruction specialists can assist and create supplemental short videos as needed by teachers to enhance the asynchronous instruction. Next, I would like you to see a few of our NPS teacher Canvas sites. This first site here, this is actually Canvas, so students log in, and this is what they see when they first come on. As you can see, there are many labeled items. And if you click on the labeled items, you'll actually go to those areas. So on the left, you can access the math class. You can also access writing class or science. So this would be set up for an elementary classroom where the teacher would teach multiple subjects. Additionally, students will have access to the meeting expectations. Down at the bottom, you see those areas where they can click, assignment list, resource, resource for students that they can use, homework information, newsletter, access to Clever as well. This next slide shows you, again, similar items, a different teacher. And you can see different ways that you can, of course, access. In the upper right-hand corner, you see the focus wall. So students can click on math, or reading, or science. They can click on those areas. There are also videos that could be accessed here on the upper left-hand area. And you can also see in the center of the room where it says Connect Zoom. That is a secure Zoom login link for that direct connection for the student. Next slide, please. And here we see another page, again, with similar resources and classroom rules on the top left. And again, that's secure Zoom link on to the right. And the rest of this page, on the next page there, this is the rest of that page. I had to break them up into two slides. Here we can see again additional resources, attendance, contacts, homework, daily schedule, assignments, expectations in the classroom. And again, the, the secure Zoom link can be seen there. And the last Canvas slide, Canvas classroom page, this is actually a secondary page. And this is where the teacher teaches one subject. I had to shrink it down a little bit, so maybe a little challenging to see, but there are links to lab safety, online textbook, information about the school counselor, getting to know the teacher, Canvas resources. There's a Google Classroom link for a teacher that is using Google Classroom as well. The secure Zoom link is also found there, and, and many other areas. And so these are very easily customizable pages on Canvas. It really allows the students to see what's involved in the course. And it's difficult to see on this slide, but the upper right-hand corner and upper left-hand corners are where students can navigate towards modules and classes and additional information. This concludes my part of the presentation, but please let me know if you have any questions about this.
Mr. Clanton and Ms. Campson?
All right, thank you, Dr. Martin. Dr. Cataldo, thank you for the presentation on the Virtual Scholars Academy. How are the Virtual Scholars receiving their instruction right now?
Right now, they are receiving their instruction the exact same way as the rest of the school division, which is in a Zoom session as well as asynchronous lessons too.
Okay, great. I want to read something because this is what concerns me about this particular piece here. I'm looking at our NPS website, and it says note on the Virtual Scholars Academy. The VSA coursework in instructional format will continue in the same manner throughout the school year, even, even if a decision is made to implement a blended virtual face-to-face instructional model following the first semester. So is this a change that we're proposing?
No, this, so what would happen is students would go to school. You'd have non-Virtual Scholar Academy students going face-to-face. Then the, the opportunities we're exploring for the wide-angle cameras would be in class. So the teacher would be able to still see the students that are at home in Zoom that are on that same class day as they normally would. And other students would be in the classroom at the same time. So the teacher will have that ability to teach virtually as well as teach face-to-face the same time.
So just so for clarity here, so this teacher is in the classroom, they, she has, or she, she, teacher has students in the classroom, those students who are participating virtually would still be able to see what's going on in the classroom and that teacher, but just be home. Is that what we're saying?
That is correct, yes.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to bring clarity because that's come up. And I just wanted to make sure that parents and individuals understood what that looked like, and that we weren't additionally making any deviation from that, but actually modifying it to make it work for both.
Correct. And they're going to have their same teacher as well, which is what we had promised from the beginning.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clanton. That's a really important point to make. Ms. Campson, and then Ms. Bassin, and then Ms. Smith.
Thank you very much, Dr. Martin. Mr. Cataldo, do all the schools and classrooms have the movable wide-angle webcams?
Not all of them have them yet. We have them, we have a quote and everything ready to go to be able.
Does that mean that they're ordered yet when you say a quote, "ready to go"? Have they been ordered and you're waiting for them?
They have not been ordered yet, no.
So November 1st, probably, I mean, November, whatever the dates are, probably they won't be in the buildings in November?
We have enough in the division at this current time to, as we do the phase-in process that was proposed, that we would have enough for the phase-in students. Again, the, the K, the 3-5, the 6-8, and the 9-12 will still be at home doing the online pieces they've been doing. We'll have a small portion of students that will be face-to-face, and for those classrooms who will have cameras available for them.
All right, so for any classes, any grade levels that are coming to school as they are being slowly phased in, every single one of those classrooms that are associated with those grade levels will have this camera in place when they come into the buildings?
Yes, that is exactly what we're exploring right now, to have those ready.
Exploring meaning?
It's meaning that we're going through the process of ordering the cameras based on a decision made tonight, and then moving forward with that plan.
Because I know I'm getting lots and lots of parent concerns, as I'm sure, I see Ms. Bassin, she, I'm sure she's got, we've got some of the same questions. And I know my impression, when I saw the Scholars Academy, was what a great idea, but I did not have an impression that it was all, I mean, when I look at all these screens and they look great, but where is a live person in this? In other words, they will be able to follow what's happening in the classroom as always? In other words, it'll be coming right into the living room of the Scholars Academy children? The live lessons will be coming in? And so they won't be just doing, hitting tabs and going into more and more online stuff? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. And also, we've asked teachers to record lessons as well, so they will have access to recorded lessons. And also Canvas and Virtual Virginia currently do have videos and lessons as well that are for viewing afterwards.
All right, they're recorded lessons, but I just want to be sure, because that was something that it doesn't sound like, and I can be misreading it, but it doesn't sound like to many of our parents, it's sounding to them like their children are doing all online with no adults there providing direct teaching to them. That's incorrect, that was incorrect, and my, my assumption is incorrect, is what you're saying?
Yes.
And so that when we go, so when the pre-K 2, to, to, pre-K, pre-Ks to grade 2 start coming into our schools, the children who enrolled in the Virtual Academy, Virtual Scholars Academy, will be able to watch those lessons all day long. I mean, K-2s aren't going to be popping around on the internet, and they will have that.
They will.
Because I need to make sure that our parents are reassured, because we have a lot of parents who are not ready to send their children back to school, which is their right, but they want to make sure, especially the younger ones, that they are interacting with live people.
Yeah, yes.
All right, thank you. That clarifies a lot for me, and I hope for those parents that have been expressing so much concern to me about this. I really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Ms. Campson, Ms. Bassin, go ahead.
Yeah, so along those same lines, Ms. Campson and I seem to be on the same wavelength today. So, so just for clarity, so the, the distance learning cameras have not been ordered as yet, and the decision, so what about the decision that is made tonight will, is really the, I guess, the sticking point that is keeping the division from ordering the cameras? Like, what is, what is it that you are seeking from us tonight to make that determination?
Actually, we're moving forward with this because we don't, we know that the cameras will be used for that live type of interaction. But as far as how, how many to get at this time, we have a quote in for them, received it this week, and so we're going to be ordering them this week.
Okay, so we have the funding available for what you need based on the current, I guess, the current model, or the current number of students that are in VSA, right?
That is correct.
And can you remind me, that number, I think the last time we received a number was about, was it 6,000?
About 6,000, yeah. It was about, about 1,700 teachers that teach classes with virtual, at least one or more virtual Scholar Academy student in their class. So not every single class has Virtual Scholar Academy students.
Okay.
Teacher that will have those will have a camera.
Okay. And then have you been, as Ms. Campson just mentioned, you know, I know there are, you know, I'm getting calls and about, you know, what if I'm not ready? I thought I, I would be ready, but I'm not ready to send my child. And, you know, I know in January, they would have the opportunity normally based on previous presentations. But are, are you getting requests currently from families to, you know, maintain the virtual learning model or? learning model, or are you, or are you not getting very much right now?
Yes, we are getting some requests. I had one yesterday. And it's very easy to go from virtual to stay virtual. There's not an issue dealing with the bus or a classroom, or potentially having too many students in one classroom at a time, possibly change a teacher, or something like that. So yes, and we're honoring those requests.
Okay. Okay, so if we were to, and I, and Dr. Birdsong, this is, this may be a question for you and Dr., you know, I'm not certain who directly would be able to answer this. But if we were to resurvey our families about a preferred learning model, whether it be, you know, in-person or virtual, do it again, and we see this, you know, big increase in this desire for virtual learning, do you feel that we would be able to accommodate the demand? I mean, of course, it's hard to say because we don't know what that number is. But, you know, I personally would like to see what that number is and see if, you know, because I think if if that number were great, not only of our teachers and of our students, we may be able to get those that are most in need. We may, that might get us a little bit closer to get those students most in need into the schoolhouse, you know, on a more consistent basis than two days a week. So, you know, I'd like to hear your thoughts about that.
It's definitely something worth exploring. It is, it is definitely easier to schedule a child that has been scheduled for an A house or a B house to our C house, which is the Virtual Scholars Academy, than it would be to do otherwise. That's why we had those parents commit to a semester of VSA because of the the scheduling. So certainly, I I can't foresee a reason right now, and again, don't hold me to this, but I I can't foresee a reason why we wouldn't be able to accommodate a significant number of VSA students.
Okay.
But it would be difficult otherwise. Like, if we had thousands of children coming from VSA to in-person, then that would impact us because of, you know,
Right, the other way.
The social distancing, you know, having a limited number of children we can have on school buses, all of that.
Absolutely, yeah, I can see that. And so so if the same teacher, so my other question, and Dr. Cataldo, this might be for you. So if the same teacher is teaching in in the classroom and is also teaching students in VSA, okay, and that's what I think I, you know, just, I might need to hear lots of times. But so they're they're kind of straddling both modes of teaching. You know, I have questions around, are we providing stipends for those teachers? Because I can imagine that the workload and, you know, is number one, different, you know, to do, to kind of set it, set up the lesson plan through two different delivery modes. Are we, are we compensating our teachers who are doing that any differently than than we traditionally would be? Or maybe that's Mr. Billups. I don't, I don't know.
I mean, we may have a teacher that has like one or two students at home. And so the teaching, you know, would be very, would be exactly the same. If they teach on the Canvas, if the students in the classroom are there and there's one or two students at home, we have a lot of classes with just very, very few students in them. And so we don't foresee that being a difficult thing for a teacher to do.
Okay, okay. All right, and then, okay, and then the next piece, and we may be getting to this later, but, you know, I do want to talk about hazard pay for those teachers that are coming into the schoolhouse. And I'd like to hear what the administration is thinking around that as well.
Ms. Bassin, since that's, let's let's go, come back to that. And I don't want to go too far off topic because Ms. Smith also has a question.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, let's come back to that. Ms. Smith, go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to say that both Ms. Bassin and Ms. Campson hit on a few of the things that I had questions about. My primary one was, and now I understand it, surveying the families again to see if any of them are interested in the virtual or VSA module. And looking to see the impact that that has on the number of students who would actually require in-person or or instruction, in-person instruction, so that we can see if that will create the balance we need to ensure that our most vulnerable students receive a consistent four to maybe five days of instruction. So I'd like to see that folded into what we're doing. And I have, in terms of questions, and I have one question. How many, how many wide-angle cameras do we have the quote for?
The quote is for 1,700.
Okay, thank you.
I have, I have a clarifying question, if you don't mind. So when we talk about surveying our families, wouldn't it be just as, or even more effective if we opened up a new selection process, so at like the, we called it an application, but everyone was accepted, so, you know what I mean? But like, we just open up the process and say, this is the deadline to choose?
I think to the points that have been made, at at this point, it would be extremely difficult to reschedule students who have opted for the VSA to come back to in-person. Again, it would be easier to do otherwise. So maybe it would be surveying those families who have selected in-person and then send the survey out to them to see if they want to go to enroll in the VSA. I I think that's the the best thing that, the most feasible thing for us to do at this point.
Okay. Ms. Campson?
Dr. Cataldo, I'm sorry I missed this question. My understanding is that there's, that the wide-angle cameras are not necessarily synchronized with whatever, you know, I don't even give them electronics. So that is the, will the sound of what's happening won't just be children at home watching something that's muted. There will be sound because my understanding from a number of teachers is that's already a problem.
Yeah, these are web conference cameras. So in conference rooms, where you've been in a conference room and you have that web camera in the classroom, and it's getting that wide view of the participant.
Right, yeah.
And it also has sound in there too. And so sound transferred into that as well.
And that works with what we have in our classrooms?
Yes, yes.
So that is working. Well, maybe that would be a good thing to demonstrate to teachers during your next Wednesday training.
Yeah, we do have those in schools. Again, we're going to order them all for all of our virtual scholar teachers.
Which we will have by mid-November.
Yes, yes.
Okay, and so on a thing of that, so my, is there a cadre of teachers that who will continue the Virtual Academy? And is that a place to perhaps, maybe Dr. Birdsong, to place some of our teachers who have serious health issues so that we can keep, and some of these are our best teachers? Will we be able to keep those teachers maybe as part of the Virtual Academy training? So they can still work from home? Is that a possibility for staffing?
That would be, that would be wonderful, but that would be wonderful, you know, to be able to offer that. And certainly, that will will be a part of our process as we start, you know, because again, right now, you know, we're online, we know at least for the first nine weeks. And when it, when and if a decision is made about in-person instruction, that's when we will hear from more teachers, especially those who are concerned about the physical return to building. So certainly-
That's what I said last week when I asked the question in our exec meeting.
Right, and 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 so certainly, that is something that we've already thought about in in having them serve as a VSA teacher and making sure they had all the training and and all of that that is needed. I just want to clarify too, we can't make any promises around when shipments will come in. So while Dr. Cataldo has said we, he can assure you that they'll be in by November, I don't want to say that because we don't know. Because it could be like the backorder with Chromebooks that some other divisions experienced. We were fortunate and we didn't experience that. So I would hate for us to make a commitment we're not 100% sure about. So I need to make that clear.
So if that happens, what will, what will be the backup solution?
They'll get in because I have, I have, I can't control when they'll get in.
Right, and I understand that. That's why I asked the question, because I was concerned. So my question now would then be, so what, instead of that? Because I think it's likely, every time these things keep being, having to be ordered, we always have this backlog now. So what's the alternative, or is that something you're working on to ensure that the parents who are who are leaving their children in the Virtual Academy, which is such a fabulous idea, because we do have a lot of families that do not want to send their children back? I'm not sure I would. So, but they, but we need to move ahead for the parents who are ready for that. So what are we doing as a backup plan if we don't get these cameras?
So Dr. Cataldo, speak more to the videos, to the Zoom sessions available, perhaps on the Wednesdays for one-on-one conferences. Please expound upon that.
Yes.
He did explain it to me already, but my concern is that they, the only time that they can have a live teacher is when they can make an appointment on a Wednesday. Is that, would that be the only thing that would be happening as far as having live direct instruction that they're getting now with the model that's in place for the first quarter?
Right now, I mean, with the plan, yes, a live Zoom would be at the request, would be on Wednesdays. So yes, that is correct with what we're looking at right now.
And I think that that's going to be something that needs to be addressed to those parents because I, my, my phone's been popping the whole time this has been going on, and this is one of the main things that I'm hearing, is parents want to know what it is they're getting with their choices. They don't want to have to choose between what they consider their child's health and education. They want their child to still get an education. All right, I'll move it over to Ms. Bassin. I'm sorry I was talking so long.
Maybe the, and, you know, I I don't want to tell you it's due, but maybe, maybe we'd have to postpone if we weren't prepared. You know, if it's not, if it's not what we voted on, that we might have to postpone the the opening until the cameras were installed and tested.
Or hope that, hope that the cadre of virtual teachers using, many that have health issues, underlying conditions or age. I know I would qualify for all that. Then maybe they would be able to, we could use those to come in and and to to begin doing some instruction across for the Scholarship Seca, Scholars Academy. Maybe that's who would help us with it. Go ahead, Ms. Bassin, sorry.
Go ahead.
No, I think that's a, that's a good suggestion. You know, I I think that's something that we should explore as we, you know, if if the board is in agreement on on resurveying, you know, our families and our staff to see, you know, what does our staffing look like? Could it support, you know, additional virtual students? And so I I think that's a a good suggestion. But back, you know, back to my earlier question about the workload for, you know, our our, you know, VSA teachers who are also teaching, maybe teaching in-person. I guess I'm having a hard time, I guess, understanding how how it would not be additional work, particularly if, you know, they're expected to do something, some other teachers may not be on that Wednesday where they're having a live, you know, being, having the live Zoom component. And it seems like there there would naturally be some additional planning, additional work that would go along with preparing asynchronous and, or or live, but in two different modes. I I think I'm going to need a little more help understanding how how that would not be cumbersome for for a teacher.
I think Dr. Pollard mentioned before about working with ODU and working with, providing plans and professional development for our teachers in not only Canvas and in Zoom, but also in how to work with both areas. So that that's, that is professional development that we are currently planning for as we continue to move through this model.
Yeah, and and I'm very glad to hear about the professional development and the support for teachers, which is great, which, but I guess I I I guess I still, I try to imagine myself trying to do the same thing, but in two different ways. And, you know, it it just naturally, you know, and I have no doubt our teachers are going to be amazing at it, but it's, it's, I just can't imagine it not being additional work is is what I'm trying to get at. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, Ms. Bassin. It's a good point. So I I believe we're going to have a lot of questions about the next section. So I'd like to move on to operations, please. Mr. Fraley?
Good evening. Chair Martin, Vice Chair Jordan, members of the board, Dr. Birdsong. I will begin this evening with transportation. The Here Comes the Bus GPS Parent App will be available for parents to track the status of their children's school bus once students return to their assigned schools. The app can be downloaded at no charge from the App Store or the Google Play Store, depending on the device parents intend to use for tracking their children's schools. Instructions on the setup of the app will be provided via normal MPS communication channels prior to the start of the students being transported. Next slide, please. To enter the bus, all students will be required to wear masks as developmentally appropriate when they enter the bus stop area and while they are on the bus. Bus ridership will be limited to one student per seat, alternating aisle seating and window seating between each row to create distance between each rider. Windows will remain open during bus transport. Bus drivers will have spray bottles to apply a germicide spray on heavy contact areas between each stop. They will focus on seats, handrails, windows. And at the each, end of each night, all buses will be cleaned and sanitized using the 360 foggers that we all have for that. Next slide, please. The custodial staff of each school will use colored tape to identify the student desks that will be used. These desks will be maintained with a six-foot separation. The number of desks in each room will be dependent on the square footage of each room. Opening classroom windows during instructional time will be highly recommended. The walls in our hallways will be marked with painted on or sprayed on paint. Depending on the surface, the marks will be spaced at six-foot intervals. This will be completed by our painters and some senior custodians. To ensure swift movement during our class changes, lockers will not be aside. Teachers will be asked to use sanitizing wipes on each student desk that was utilized in their classroom prior to the next group of students entering for the next class. Social distancing will be practiced while heading to the cafeteria and while waiting to enter the serving lines. Signage, floor markers, seat markers will all be used as visual aids. All cafeteria staff will observe PPE requirements to prepare and serve meals, to include face shields, masks, and gloves. Sanitizing stations are being installed in each cafeteria. Students will be asked to sanitize their hands prior to entering the service line. Some schools may opt to use alternate areas for students to eat lunch. Windows will be open to improve air circulation where it is possible, and the cafeteria staff will sanitize the tables after each lunch with a germicide cleaning agent. This custodial team will restock the hand sanitizing stations, sweep the floors, and review, remove accumulated trash. At this time, we would like to review a video that demonstrates Norview High School's plan to facilitate, facilitate safely lunch service. I'll take questions.
Ms. Tanner, you have to come up here. Ms. Tanner, you have to unmute yourself.
There is audio with this.
Yeah, whoever's playing the video has to unmute themselves.
What Mr. Brower is currently doing is he's explaining how students will come down a specific stairwell, enter into the cafeteria to approach the serving lines. He's now defining the physical space of the cafeteria and how they've outlined it for student entry. There will be four serving lines, he's stating right now. And as the students leave the lines, they will be, they will be focused to come in a specific entry point to the cafeteria tables. He's defining that space right now. What he's done is he's taken 150 student desks and he's moved them into his cafeteria so he can ensure six-foot social distancing takes place. He's getting ready to show that physical space. The chairs have not been placed there yet, but they are off to the left-hand side.
This would be the exit from the commons. Our male restroom, our female restroom. We will have hands sanitation stations at each entrance. And we will also have someone stationed who can monitor and make sure that only one student enters at a time. And of course, make sure they don't forget to sanitize. At the end of our 30-minute lunch rotation, we will begin to have students, of course, don't be trash, we'll put receptacles throughout the cafeteria. Students will exit through this end of the commons area. Again, we'll have it monitored so that they will be socially distanced. Then, when we exit, the stairwell is here, will be up only. And should their classroom be on a farm wing, they can also go around the corner to the main hallway where we have another stairwell that will be up only. And for those students, for example, who may have seven or eight blocks excused, that is also going to be on afternoon exit. This is Norview High School.
Stop sharing.
Sorry about the audio.
Take questions.
Sorry, everyone just moved. Mr. Clayton and then Ms. Smith.
All right, thank you, Chair Martin. Just a couple of quick things. Mr. Fraley, if you could just clarify, so the, the mobile app for the buses, it's available now? Or is there a particular date that they can start downloading?
It will be available on November the 4th.
November 4th.
Yes, sir. And, and the neat thing about it, sir, is that if we have parents that have multiple students at multiple schools, they can go in and sign up. All they have to know is their student's ID number. And as they punch in the number, it will allow for more students. And it will actually track multiple students and buses at the same time. So our parents will have that convenience.
Great. A follow-up question, and I'm going to kind of work my way back to this one here. What we just saw at Norview High School with the cafeteria lunch situation, is that a setup that we're looking for high school, middle school and, and the elementary school? Were actually same thing, are they congregating or are they going to be in the classroom for their lunches?
We've created options. So where the physical space will accommodate the number of students that the school will house in House A and House B, they are going to use their, their common cafeteria. Where that is not an opportunity, then they will use some of the cafeteria and some alternative space. We have recommended outdoor space if they can afford buying picnic tables. We've also recommended that they use other classrooms in their schoolhouses that they can dedicate. You know, the main thing is we want to make sure we have the six-foot social distancing so that everybody can be contact traced if that need occurs and that everybody feels safe with the proper distance.
Great, thank you. Another question following up to that one is I saw a lot of things referring to open windows. And we, we know, we live here in Hampton Roads and, you know, we have five seasons here. Literally.
Literally.
So when we start getting into these winter months and, you know, it's not very feasible. I mean, I, I would think sensible to talk about opening windows when we're trying to keep heat in. It gets into my concern, which I've been raising about ventilation. We know the CDC just came out with, and I think that not only just parents, but our teachers and staff members are concerned about even with, and, and I think one of my colleagues brought this up earlier. You know, when we have to start addressing policy or even protocol around, you know, what do we, when we get to a situation where a person who doesn't want to wear a mask? Or we get into a situation where a teacher, you know, doesn't want to wear a mask? Those are some things that we got to talk about, but I know your operational wise, I'm just really this ventilation thing and trying to kind of ease that over or ease the worries, I would say. I mean, just really addressing that. And then, you know, and I'm going to caveat with this one in here about the buses because you also mentioned the same thing about the windows. And, and I was sitting here and just got the alert about Virginia Beach just had a reported case of the COVID-19 on a bus. And, but I like the way that they handled it. Quick, easy, letting the public know and then also what bus it was and being able to trace back. But just trying to tie all those things in there, that ventilation in this window thing still kind of, you know, wrestle with that a little bit.
Well, the, you know, the recommendations are that we improve airflow wherever we can. And so, you know, the most convenient thing is to open windows to create fresh air ventilation. As far as the buses, Bob and Kleinbell and I spoke today. You know, they have roof ventilation and then they have window ventilation. So as the months get cooler, the windows will be cracked a little, you know, won't be as open. And they may just rely on the roof ventilation. We're still in that discussion, but we want to make sure there is fresh air available. As far as classrooms, as, as I tried to make, you know, a little joke last time about bees and, and, you know, flying in, in a schoolhouse. We're aware there's going to be challenges. We're worried about allergies. We're worried about weather conditions. We're worried about hot, cold. You know, those are things that we're going to deal with as they occur. But the recommendation is to, to improve airflow. And in some of our buildings, that's the best way to do it.
Yeah, and my final on that one, Ms. Martin, is that just looking at it from an equity position on our buses, which in most cases may be the first point of contact for some of our students. But some of our students who may not have access or they don't have a mask for that day, are we making preparations to ensure that we have some backup PPE that's available on the buses?
All, all bus drivers will have, I'll call it a box of available masks that they could disperse. We are going to encourage students to show up to the bus stop with a mask on as they interact with their peers while they're waiting for the bus. But in the instance that one of them does show up without it, they will be handed a mask and required to put it on before they enter the bus.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Oh, any, okay, Ms. Bassin, go ahead.
Mr. Fraley, can you, so, so in this, this is a high school. Have, have you also, well, I guess it's going to be much more difficult, but where children are not moving around, you know, the building, how to limit the, the children in a particular place so that there isn't movement all around the school bill, building? You know, this is the cafeteria versus, you know, being maybe in their last block or whatever that they're in and keeping them there versus having them travel through the, the school to get to this, you know, location for lunch.
We have not explored locking students in classrooms and moving teachers. And one of the biggest challenges there is the diversity of our master schedule. We have honors classes. We have high school credit bearing classes. We have what we call co-teach classes. And that is just not feasible, moving teachers because of the diversity of our master schedule.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is that something that's being considered though at the elementary level where they're eating lunch in the classroom?
Yes, ma'am. A number of our elementary principals have approached my office and asked, is it a mandate that we have to utilize part of the cafeteria and part of the classrooms? And I, and I informed them the mandate is six-foot spacing. If, if you choose to just take your students back to be supervised by the, the teacher of record or a duty teacher, then that's the principal's decision.
Okay.
I just, I'm sorry, I missed one interrupt to you.
No, go, go ahead.
Well, my concern is about air quality. I think it was at one of the last meetings, I think you had said something about the comprehensive review of air quality hadn't occurred yet. So has that occurred since then?
I, I had a long conversation with Danny Johnson and he, he conversed with Bill Poocher and Dave Weimair. Those are our lead people in the trades for HVAC. And I discussed with them some of the, you know, points that you all made, specifically changing air filters to be the MRF-13 air filters. And those are not recommended. And the reason is, is, is number one, they do filter out more particles, but they filter down to .03 microns. The, the micron size of the C19 infected is smaller. So it wouldn't relieve that. It would actually pass through it. And the other reason that they don't like using the filters is because it slows down the airflow. And if it's summertime, then it can overheat the coils. If, if it's wintertime, it can, it can freeze the coils and then the unit becomes useless. It has to be repaired. So as far as us making any holistic changes to our HVAC filter systems, they don't recommend that.
And then, so what I, I, according to the EPA, because I was looking into this, the, you know, it, it needs to be a two-part system. So some redundancy, well redundancy in a sense that we have our air filters that are clean and regularly changed, but not the ones that are so, what are they, the point two or point one micrometers? Because they get clogged like, and you know, end up.
They're referred to as MRF-13 filters. They have a specific name. Yes, ma'am.
Again, not an expert, but, but what I was, what I was reading was that the recommendation is that you have the rig, whatever regular filters, you know, obviously changed out regularly. But in addition to that, the sanitation of the environment using ultraviolet or the sanitation sprays. Is, is, is there, can you explain if you'll be using some type of combination like that or what is the plan?
Ultraviolet, we, we have not considered. That has not been a recommendation made to me by our, our staff at school facilities. And I believe that's a recommendation, not a requirement if, if it's something, you know, that you choose to do. As far as additional air filtering, can you be more specific?
Well, not, so the air filtering here, I think you've already addressed, but what else? So, and so essentially are we using air sanitizers like foggers in the classrooms and the spaces? Or what is the other?
We're doing, yes, but at the end of every day, the entire schoolhouse will be fogged with our 360 machines. So the entire building will be fogged at the end of the day after student utilization and staff utilization. It will not be, that will be not, won't be done during the day because we're worried about it, it may be creating some breathing difficulties for people. It, it needs to disperse, settle and then dry to be most effective. So it's not something we would do with people in attendance.
Okay, thank you. And I also, as far as during one of the videos about the PPE equipment that was, has been stockpiled and delivered, delivered to the schools and some of the 51 NPS facilities. I remember that. And also the, the stockpiles so that they're on hand when needed. There was a mention of glass germ shields and face shields. And I'm particularly interested in the, in the germ shields. Have those been distributed to each of the schools? And if so, how are they being used?
That's a good question. Dr. Moore and I talked about that yesterday. So he's decided to order more of the actual shields from a conversation he, Dr. Gibson and I facilitated. And so he's got, he has, I believe he's placed the order or is placing the order. And those, we are going to give to each teacher if they request it. They will not, we, I don't believe we will have the quantity to issue to students. But we will have the masks for students if they show up without one.
Okay, so just for clarity, you're saying that the, the shields, you're, you're, you're looking to have this for the, for the staff and teachers? And then the, and you said the, are you talking about the shields that go over the face for the students?
I believe, no, just for the staff would be the shields. The students would be the masks.
And to just, you know, we're trying to stay in alignment with the CDC, you know, guidance. And they don't necessarily speak to shield. So certainly that's why we are focusing our efforts on, on masks for all of our students. And, you know, when it's developmentally appropriate and for our staff. Just to be clear.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Fraley, Ms. Smith and then Ms. Bassin?
Yes. How long do we expect the supply of disposable PPE to the demand that we have before reordering?
We, we believe we are covered until Christmas at this point in time, but we have funding to order more supplies.
And that was the other part of my question. And will that funding carry us out through the end of the school year?
I, I'm not aware of the volume of that funding. I might have to ask Dr. Birdsong to jump in here or Mr. Jenkins.
Based on our previous, previous orders, Mrs. Smith, we, we do believe that we have the amount needed. However, if we predict or determine that it's not enough, I will certainly let the board know. But I think we're in a good place.
Ms. Bassin, would you like to go ahead?
Yes, that's a, that's a really great question because that, you know, knowing how much PPE we have and until when, and then being able to plan going forward, I think that's an important question. But my question is about the building space. So in your assessment of, you know, spaces to be used, did you also look at the buildings in terms of high-risk areas versus low-risk areas within the school buildings? Because, you know, as you know, you know, we've been getting, you know, a lot of questions and concerns around our oldest buildings. And even within those buildings, there are areas that may be deemed, you know, higher risk from a ventilation standpoint. And other, you know, other factors that may be, that may, that I guess some find contribute to, you know, certain symptoms. Do you, or did you take that into account in terms of figuring out where to put students? Were there, were there classrooms that, that you didn't feel were, you know, would be a good, would be good to have classrooms, you know, filled, classrooms filled, meaning, you know, with the six feet distancing requirement, were there areas of the building, but can you speak to that at all?
In our conversations, our concern, our concerns are high contact areas. You know, stairwell, row, rails, rails. When kids walk down and touch the lockers with their hand, you know, we, we need to send the message and we will that we need to do everything we can to keep our hands on ourselves. Let, you know, wear our masks, wash our hands. Let, let, you know, wear our masks, wash our hands, maintain our social distancing. Those five mitigation strategies we believe, uh, will lead us i- in the best direction possible. As far as, you know, areas where there could be some concerns. You know, we've put as much emphasis as we can on the cafeteria. Uh, you know, there will be students in and out, uh, over a two and a half, three hour period. There'll be a whole lot of movement. There'll be serving. There'll be, you know, entering, leaving, uh, transporting food. You know, there's a lot going on, but we believe that our plan is, uh, pretty detailed and we think everybody understands the vision. As far as gymnasiums, um, the locker rooms are closed. There will be no changing of clothes. Uh, if they enter the gym, um, the activities are limited to, uh, non-sharing activities. We will not be having balls. We will not, you know, it'll, it'll be, you know, very limited, uh, interaction. Uh, more physical activity for exercise and, and things of that nature.
Okay. And will, will there be ambassadors or, or so to speak, um, you know, in those places to help monitor compliance with these, uh, distancing guidelines and other mitigation strategies?
Well, I mean, all principals have the authority to assign duty stations to internal staff. We're not looking for a whole lot of visitors to come in the building because that would create, you know, more concerns that we'd have to monitor. So, so yeah, duty personnel will be utilized to assist in hall, hall management and, and student movement.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Camson, go ahead.
I think because I'm so high up in this corner.
You keep moving.
I'm gonna start doing this. How about that? All right, just two quick questions, uh, Mr. Fraley. We're, we're talking about opening windows, which of course we can't do once winter sets in, but on nice days now we could. But what about the schools where windows don't open in a lot of classrooms? A lot of our old schools, Ocean View, half the windows didn't open. They were painted shut. Or on the other hand, the new Ocean View, none of the windows open. That's how it was built. For some reason, I don't know the reason, but that's my understanding. So could, could you think about that? And then my next one real quick, cause I know we're running late. Is what about the schools that are offering all day, all day long daycare? Uh, and usually they're using the gyms, I think, probably. What's the story there? Is, is it, will, will those go away or will they still be able to keep them?
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer those in the order you asked them. For the brand new, for the brand new schools who have the most advanced HVAC systems, they have, uh, systems that actually draw in outside air and mix it with the conditioned air.
Oh, that's great. Okay, thank you.
The general mix is seventy-five percent of the air is reconditioned. And twenty-five percent is pulled into those new schools through those advanced systems.
Time to build some more new schools.
I would agree. That's what I signed up for. And as far as, uh, your second question was, can you help me? I've already forgotten.
Oh, it was about, we, Dr. Birdsong did such a great job of forming port partnerships, um, with daycare facilities that are now located in our schools for all day long daycare. What happened? And I assume that they're probably mostly located in gyms. What happens to those? We won't lose those, will we?
Uh, well, to the best of my knowledge, all of those will be consumed by, you know, our House A and House B students on our hybrid schedule. So I believe we will, but I would like Dr. Gibson to support that question as well. That, that's, that's her charge.
Yes. When school reopens, we will go back to our before and after school programs. Those that are currently serving students full-time will move back to before and after school. We're also working with the YWCA to be sure that their program is ready to go when we reopen. So we will still be able to provide support to our families.
Well, so if we're, if we start off by putting the pre-K to two kids into the schools, then we still have young children who are in our daycare, in those daycare programs that are all day? What happens there?
We're going to have to figure that out. I don't know the answer to.
Oh, okay. And that's fine. I just wanted to make sure it's, it's on the, the things that you'll look at. Cause I know you can't think of every single thing. And I understand that. And I think that the, the board members are, are helping, helping to remind you of things that you might not have thought of.
And we appreciate it.
And I, so I, and so I, I wasn't expecting you to know the answers to everything, although Mr. Fraley got my interest when he started talking about the ventilation in the new schools. So now I'm waiting for the new schools. He's gonna build for us. All right. Thank you, Dr. Martin, for letting me get another couple of questions in.
I, I really am concerned though about even if we move to the hybrid model, that these families who are paying for this five-day-a-week service, it won't be available to them. And so I'm, I'm really concerned about that. And so please, please let us know, um, when you have some answers as far as how that could possibly continue.
We will.
Dr. Gabriel?
Yeah, I, I think that that's something that we need to be, um, really open to our families about. I can understand how Dr. Birdsong and team arrived at the hybrid model based upon the resources that we have. For families that are planning during the week, um, for childcare, if they are going to go to X organization and say, we need three days a week versus two days a week. It just, it's, it puts a cork in, uh, the childcare ability. And then if we're limiting the full day availability because we will be occupying the school, that's going to add to, uh, what they have available to them. It's really difficult. I can definitely understand the challenges, both from a parental perspective and then from the division perspective. Uh, so I definitely think that we need to be very cognizant of the, which I know you all are, of the stressors on the family with regard to the childcare. Because that's been probably of all the concerns that have been raised, with regards to the hybrid schedule, that's probably been the one that surfaced at the highest level. And from folks reaching out, uh, to, to me. And when we do build those new schools, can we please have them with a separate gym, cafeteria and auditorium as we're seeing right now? Since we need all this social spacing?
Yes, hopefully we'll have that discussion at, at another time.
Kind of, uh, go back to the question around daycare and certainly, you know, that would be a grave concern to us because we want to make sure our families have the resources that they need. And I don't, I can't believe that Mr. Fraley has forgotten about this. But he's actually, um, they've been meeting with some of our colleagues in the city to explore opening up some more rec centers. So that we could, you know, uh, possibly be able to provide, um, full-time, uh, daycare. In addition to that, our, um, faith-based community partners, um, have been wonderful. And so there's an opportunity to engage them as well. So it, it is on the radar. And when we do know that is of, you know, great importance to, to families, especially to working families.
Absolutely. Thank you very, very much for that clarification.
Yeah. And to, to just add a little bit to that, the city has closed twenty, uh, they have twenty-one rec centers. They have closed fifteen. They only plan to open six. And that does not meet our needs. So Dr. Birdsong allowed me to ask for eight to be, um, open so that we can utilize them for HPE and any other, uh, programming we would like. If we can use those for HPE, some of the other larger rooms in the schoolhouses might be able to be dedicated towards the programs you're referring to.
Excellent. Ms. Basine and Mr. Clayton?
Yeah, um, I'm glad to hear about the conversations with the city. Cause I was even thinking, um, you know, for additional space, if, if we could, you know, even use space for classrooms in those, um, in those buildings, what other space could we use so that we could have more consistent, um, teaching and learning happening versus, you know, being constrained to our building? And, um, you know, so I, I'm glad to hear their thoughts and perhaps that could be a consideration. Um, but going back, so I'm gonna back up a little bit. So with the childcare, so you said, based on what our needs are, how do we know what our needs are? And, um, I know there was a survey that was done. Um, I'm not sure if it was really, um, I think, um, minus nine to five was, uh, working to assist us with trying to identify what our childcare needs are. Do we have the results of that survey? Like how, how many of our families are using, um, uh, childcare? Do we, do we know that number?
We don't know the number of families who are currently using childcare. However, we've stationed childcare throughout the city so that parents can access the childcare. And the groups that are running the childcare facilities have indicated that they are willing to expand as needed. So far, um, after the first week, we did add to the South Side, um, St. Helena, um, area. And STEM, I think South Side STEM added a, a setting. And on the South Side, the actual Boys and Girls Club services the children at St. Helena. So as we need to add, we're going to work with the groups to add to make sure that we're meeting the needs of families.
Okay. Yeah. And I guess I would just like to know what that, how, how we're determining that need and what that need is. And what we as a board can do to support, um, the administration to, uh, you know, meet the need. Um, the other piece is tied to one of the, you know, the, my concern around the hybrid model. And I think before we leave here today, we have to provide clear direction, first of all, you know, to the administration for what, you know, whether we're moving forward with that or whether we'd like to, um, you know, ask the administration to, uh, reassess our families and our teachers about, um, in-person versus, versus virtual. But if we were to go to the hybrid, uh, model and that was the only way we could, uh, we could do this, I hope that we will have some sort of a coordinated plan with our childcare providers, um, for those days where the student is not in, uh, the school building. Whether, you know, let's say, you know, um, you know, most of the kids i- in first, you know, and I'm just picking it like a first grade class, we're using, um, the Boys and Girls Club for their, to their childcare. Could we group them together or find some way of minimizing, um, you know, grouping ki- kids together who are using a variety of different childcare, uh, uh, sources so that we can minimize, you know, the potential exposures? So that's just some of the things, you know, looking forward, you know, if we could, we could think about that, that way. Um, that would be great. But first, I think the board, I think before we leave here, I think one of the critical pieces of information we need to give the administration is what do we want them, what are we leaving here? What do we want them to do when they leave here today? Like what are we directing the administration to do? And I'm not sure that we've, um, gotten to that point. And you may have other, you know, more slides to go, go through before we get there. But, um, I just feel like we gotta come back to, come back to that, that very important point.
Yep, we have some more slides, um, and then.
Yeah, I, I'd like to turn it back over, uh, to Dr. Poe.
Mr. Fraley, just, just a moment. Um, Mr. Clayton had a question.
Oh, I apologize.
I'd like to finish the rest of the, go, the rest of the presentation and, cause I agree with, um, Ms. Basine. We need to get to the, the net gritting, but what are we trying to do in direct?
All right. I'm sorry, Mr. Fraley, go ahead and continue.
I, I apologize. I thought you were done. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm done. And I'd like to turn it back over to Dr. Poe, please.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Fraley. Um, and we'll, we'll go straight through to the end with myself, um, and then Ms., Mrs. Willie Clark. Um, as we continue to plan for in-person learning, communication and outreach are critical components as we've seen throughout our shutdown so far. As you may be aware, the Norvett Public Schools website now has a direct link to the newly released for Dina Department of Health Metrics webpage. The information contained on this page was outlined by Dr. Lindsay's presentation last week and restated this afternoon by, uh, Drs. Gibson and Dr. Moore. Norvett Public Schools will also continue to report positive confirmed COVID nineteen cases to our stakeholders. The Community Engagement and Communications Office is currently planning to start a, a mask-wearing campaign for our students as other, as well as other informational videos that Dr. Birdsong mentioned earlier. So they are fully prepared to attend in-person learning while wearing the proper PPE. As Dr. Birdsong has done since the spring, new information will continue to be published in the Coronavirus Communications Newsletter. And it has started at the end of September. Norvett Public Schools will continue monthly surveys to parents and teachers to glean their feedback on a regular basis on the instructional program. I'd now like to turn it over to, uh, the proud principal of South Side STEM Academy, Mrs. Lentia Willie Clark.
Good evening, School Board Chair Martin, Vice Chair Jordan, Superintendent Dr. Birdsong, and distinguished School Board members. I am Principal Lentia Willie Clark, the proud principal of South Side STEM Academy at Campus Stella, where we service students in grades kindergarten through eighth grade. As a proud cornerstone of a diverse community, we are working to ensure equity and excellence for all. We are in education because we love teaching and we love learning. Further, we are a team of educators who consistently support the children, their families and the entire MPS family. We are servant leaders. As students, next slide please, we enter our school building, you will see staff members with smiling eyes behind facial coverings to help properly protect all. When entering the classrooms, you will see desks and tables spaced six feet apart as well as the neatly taped floors that have been measured by our custodial team of experts. Special care was taken for proper spacing with desks six feet apart from the front, the side and the back of the classroom for proper social distancing. Teaching space from the smart board for social distancing was factored in as well. As children go up and down the stairwells, they will use only one side of the handrail for travel. The water fountains will be covered as well to support the safety of all. Next slide. Throughout the school building as well as within our school cafeteria, the well-kept shiny floors have been clearly marked according to CDC guidelines to be six feet apart for social distancing. In our cafeteria, children will sit on one side of the cafeteria table. All cafeteria tables have been marked clearly. The booth seating table locations have been locked in place to form a clear line for student use to safely go in and out of the cafeteria. Sanitation stations have been placed throughout our school building and plexiglass has been installed in the main office area along with the school clinic location of the school. Our isolation room will be off from the Scola if there are situations that require quarantine. Every situation will be handled with care and professionalism to support students coming back to a more normal situation in our new normal setting. After all, we are a team and our motto at South Side STEM Academy at Campus Stella remains, teamwork makes the dream work. We can and we will do this. Thanks for the opportunity to share. And now I return you to Dr. Poe.
Thank you, Ms. Willie Clark. And in this time, we are ready for that discussion.
Okay. Mr. Jordan, you've been very quiet. I'm sure you have something.
You know what? I, I said I would wait and, uh, wanted us to, to talk about some overarching questions, uh, just, just a couple of questions before I go into discussion. Back to the, uh, the comment about six thousand students in the VSA program and seventeen hundred teachers. So that, that if I'm calculating right, that currently means the, uh, ratio is what, uh, one teacher to about three and a half students?
Mr. Jordan, I think if I heard correctly, he was referring to the number of cameras that he got the quote for, not the number of teachers.
I thought it was one camera for each teacher. Well, well, tell me then, how many teachers do we have in the VSA?
Dr. Katold, I'm gonna have to lean on you for that.
It's right around that same number of seventeen.
Yeah. Right. That's, that's what I thought he said. And so then, um, in the proposed hybrid model, those teachers that are assigned to the VSA, their ratio would then change. Is that what I understand? They would have some students that they would be dealing with in person in addition to the students that they currently have. students that they currently have virtually.
Yes, the ratio would be, it'd be the same, same number of students that right now everybody is virtual. And then during the hybrid model, some of those students will be face-to-face and some will continue to be online and virtual.
Some of the VSA students would convert to face-to-face?
No, the VSA students, because a teacher teaches, let's say you said three point some. Uh, it was, it was what it averaged out to. So the teacher would have their class and some of those students would stay online at home because they're the Virtual Scholar Academy students in House C. And then you would have the other students would be face-to-face.
All right. In the, they're, they are currently teaching VSA students plus non-VSA students.
Correct.
So then, so then the, the, the 6,000 in VSA is really not the right number for me to use for the ratio then, because they're actually doing more than that.
I'm not sure if I understand the question.
Right, right now in, in VSA, you were saying there were 6,000 students.
Yes.
But a teacher that's assigned to VSA, I thought you were just saying would serve VSA students plus other students who are currently online. But we are predicting would come back or are intended to come back to in-person when that's available.
Correct.
So when I was doing my ratio, I really was using the wrong set because it's greater than 6,000.
The virtual, virtual Scholar Academy students is about 6,000.
Okay. All right. So, uh, I guess just going to my, uh, discussion points then. So back when we had the original reopening plan, uh, that was posted in August and, uh, also going back to the discussion we had in July, when we agreed to go to the first nine weeks online. You know, we talked about some, uh, how we would kind of prioritize students if we were going to phase in. And, um, as is indicated in the presentation, it kind of mirrors that we say based upon research, as I understand it. We were saying that we would focus on our equity and opportunity students because the research was telling us that those students, um, uh, generally speaking, may be better off in an in-person setting, uh, to the extent, uh, all, all of this is predicated on safety and health. But that those students would benefit better from an in-person setting. And that's why we were prioritizing those early learners, students with disabilities, and some others first. Is, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, so as we are proposing to do our first phase with the equity and opportunity students, how many students are they?
So I, Mr. Jordan, I have an exact number for you, but it's all of our pre-K, grade one and grade two students. It's all of our EL students that are level one, level two, and a, a few that would be level three based case on, based case by case. And then it would be all of our self-contained special education students, our students with disability and self-contained classrooms.
So, so as a board, what I, what I, and as a team, frankly, uh, working with Dr. Birdsong as a team, um, I think we, you know, we use the word unprecedented all the time. I don't like to use it, but I'm gonna use it in this case. Um, since we are dealing with this unprecedented scenario, and I feel like we have um, a lot of things we can hammer down and go deep on versus going wide, that we get information on, um, how many students in this first phase, uh, we're talking about. How many students? Uh, what staff we have, what staff is required to serve them? Uh, what the staff availability is to serve them? Uh, what the health mitigation requirements are to serve them? And that we quantify and qualify, um, how we serve them better than any other school division in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And, um, uh, and once we have a good understanding of that, which would be in my mind prior to the October 21st meeting, we come back and be clear on, uh, do we have everything that we need to meet that, to meet that goal? Simultaneously, uh, where we know that we have strengthening to do with our current online offerings, that we also come back on the 21st, understanding what we need to do to take our, uh, online learning platform that we have successfully implemented to another level of, of success. So I think we should cheer the success that we have. And I think we should define a new level of success that we want to have in, uh, in that en- environment. And then, um, let's focus on, on that. Um, and get that right and do that well, including buildings, buses, all the things that we've spent the last uh, couple of hours, uh, talking about. I think we need to, um, take this opportunity to shake, to air on the side of sharing more information and more data and, uh, put it in writing so we can see it and really have a deep understanding. So that when we say we have all the resources that we need, we know what we're comparing the resources and the need against. And if we find we are in excess, then we know what we can do moving forward. If we're fine, we're in a deficit, then we know what we need to do to, to adjust. But I think we need to make sure we have a very strong foundation, uh, before we build too much on top of it. And some of these things I don't think should wait, like with the, uh, knowing about the teacher availability. Um, I don't think that should wait till after we make a decision. I think that should be a factor into the decision that we make. And then, um, uh, and then from there, I think we can then talk about how do we phase in, uh, additional students? Giving some priority again to, um, you know, we had talked about a little bit in, in July about the needs of our working families, you know, those that I believe others had mentioned earlier that the hybrid may not work for them. I'm not sure all the, all the factors involved. But can we quantify, uh, those families who have indicated to us they also would like to return? Um, they may be inside of the equity and opportunity first phase, or they may be outside of that. But I think for us to know, um, uh, those numbers as hard as we can get them would be important in our decision-making and then also can help us to determine some of the conversations we were having about childcare needs and so forth. And I think if we can look maybe trying to have some excellent, excellence, you know, strong excellence there. Um, and look at how we would do that with all the safety protocols and measures and resources that we say that we have. Um, and do that for the first, for the next, uh, starting November 4th. If, if it, if we meet those goals and measures that we've set. And then from there, talk about after we have quantified and qualified that, what would it look like as we get to the middle school students and high school students and others? Um, going into what is currently, uh, indicated as a, uh, as a January, uh, timeframe. I, I think we should move back from all and move back to, um, clearly identified need on the student learning side, on the staffing side, and on the physical space side and having the money to do that. And I think if we can do that, define it, do it well, and do it with excellence, we will also build strong confidence, uh, amongst ourselves, uh, and in the community about what we have going forward, even at the same time that we'll be dealing with, uh, uh, flu season and, and, and the health indicators and measures that I think Ms. Lucine has championed that we make sure that we are, are clear on. So I'm suggesting that as a board, we, um, do that, but come back on the 21st with that solid, clear written information that we can have in advance to study and be prepared to act upon, so that when we do take that vote, we can be clear on, um, who we're serving, uh, how we want to serve them, uh, how long we're going to serve them, and how much it's going to, to take. And do we really have all that we need to, uh, to do so? So that's my, uh, discussion point for the board and, uh, Dr. Birdsong to consider.
Um, Dr. Bird, well, Ms. Campson has a question.
See, my new, my new way of waving my hand.
From the top corner, top, top right-hand corner to the left bottom corner of my screen. I'm so sorry.
I'll be practicing these for next time. I just wanted, uh, very interesting listening to what Mr. Jordan said. He has a lot of great ideas. However, I think I, if we're planning to, to do something and, and start gradually bringing in our most vulnerable kids and we know who they are, they are the, uh, self-contained class, students with disabilities and our ELLs level one and two. Next, of course, the, the little kids. We need to plan, if, we need to plan it sooner. If, if we, if, if, if he's saying he wants to not vote, then I think we need a call meeting next week so we can give him information because Dr. Birdsong, I mean, they've done a ton of planning and I know they'll be doing more now, but we need at least to get our, 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 our special needs kids and our ELL kids in and start planning for that little bit down the road. We have a little bit more time before we're gonna start the others, but, um, we need to, to, uh, we can't just keep pushing it down the road. We need to decide yes or no. So parents know. As a parent, you know, I had to work, I had two children. That's a lot of daycare headaches and everything else. They need to, to, uh, we need a little time, we need to give some lead time if we're gonna do anything second quarter. So postponing may be the answer in itself, and I don't think that's quite fair.
If I can.
Jump right in because.
I haven't changed, I haven't recommended any changes to dates. All I'm, all I'm suggesting is, is that we make sure that we can better quantify and qualify what we're doing in that regard. So as you know, you're, you're, you have far more expertise in, in this than I could ever dream of. But, but when you use the definition you just described of, uh, who the fa- first phase students are, and then when I look on the slide and then when I look in the reopening plan, I don't, I don't know how to ensure that what you just described and what I thought we described are the same thing. And so that's what I'm saying is helpful to me to, and I think it'd be helpful to the entire board, for us to be clear on the definitions that we're using and be clear on, uh, quantifying who those students are. So I want to be clear, I'm not suggesting that we delay, uh, this November 4th uh, phase in that is currently being proposed. I'm just saying that right now, I don't know, and I'm not sure that any board member knows right now, how many students we're, we're talking about in that, in that set. So if, if it's able to be provided tonight and I'm willing to stay longer, if that's what it takes in order to get a vote tonight, then I'm fine with that. My main point is I think we need to make sure that we can communicate as a board to the administration what our expectations are, what the quality of the, of the teaching and learning we expect. Um, but I also believe that Dr. Birdsong and her team deserve, uh, Dr. Birdsong in particular deserves the opportunity to engage in that discussion with us. And I didn't want to force her or her team to feel like they had to, um, you know, like even with, we, we, even with the VSA number, we say 6,000, we say 5,000 something, we say something. I'm just saying, let's, let's decide what the number is and use that for our understanding and voting and planning purposes and just be clear about it. I'm not trying to delay the, the phase in.
Well, let me just respond. When I talk about the, the three most vulnerable academic kids, academically vulnerable kids, I'm using a national definition for that in education, which is what I've said since I brought it up whenever all that was ago, is that it, it refers to special needs children, ELL children who are not yet, uh, speaking English, and our K to three students. It's, that's our pre-K. I think it's K to three, but there may be pre-K there and a nail, but that's what I'm referring to. It's not a definition I made up. I know that that's been expanded in the district, um, to, um, the, um, opportunity kids. And that, which is fine, and that's a different one. In fact, I asked Dr. Birdsong to give me a definition of that one a few weeks ago, so I understood the difference. I was only advocating for the, because this is an academic thing and it doesn't matter what race you are or what your income level is or where you live. You're, you're included with the same services that everyone else that has those identifications of special needs, ELL, and grades K to three. So I, I, if I wasn't clear about the definition that I was using, which is an educator's definition, because that's what we, we call it, um, I, I apologize.
But no, you're fine, because on the slide it says all pre-K to two, which is different than the third grade that you just mentioned.
Right, probably because they narrowed it down to keep it less. I'm not, I don't mean to answer for Dr. Birdsong. And I, when I saw it, I thought, okay, well, they, they're waiting on the third grade because they're a, a little more likely to be able to follow online. It's what I thought, but I didn't ask or said I don't want to speak for. And, and I was okay with that just to get the most vulnerable kids in it. But right now, I'd sure like to see my prior, my priorities, only I'm not speaking for other people, but the children with disabilities, uh, who are self-contained and when they talk about academically vulnerable, they're talking about all students with disabilities. But for this, to start small, the most critical of those are the ones that are in self-contained classrooms. They're in those classrooms for a reason because of the degree of extra help and support they need to implement the very, uh, detailed IEPs that they have. So that's what I was saying. And, and that's, and I would not want to see that not be able to start in November for those children if indeed a month down the road, who knows what the metrics will be. But if it's safe for them to come back, I would certainly like to see us begin with them. And it's also the least intrusive because they have their own buses, their little mini buses. Uh, they can still do their grab and go meals. We wouldn't have to open the cafeteria and run, run up that. So that's what I, that's what I was requesting was to get those two needy groups started. Then I see the superintendent's moved on, um, a couple of weeks later to getting in group three. So that's what I wanted. And that's why I was concerned when it looked like we're gonna wait another two weeks and talk about it again. I, I, that's why I said I would be willing to come to another meeting next week if it was possible. I'm not quite sure why we as a board would need exact numbers of those children because once we decide that that's what we're going to do, the superintendent and her team has those numbers. I'm not sure why, you know, they just, they'll have the numbers. I'm not sure why I would need the information of exactly how many children it was. Yeah, jump in.
So I would like to offer, um, the opportunity for Dr. Birdsong to respond and then, um, Ms. Lucine will take a question from you.
Um, I, I certainly appreciate all the feedback that, um, the board members, um, have provided and all of the great questions that have been posed. And, um, certainly we can go back and, and fill in some of the gaps, um, in, in terms of the, the data and information that you're, that you have requested. I would also respectfully request that we have perhaps a workshop on the 21st because, you know, next Wednesday is, is right around the corner. And in order for us to, to do a thorough job and, and make sure we provide you the information and, and data that you need, that would give us a little bit more time. And that would also avoid having to, to create an, another meeting that's not been scheduled. So if, if we can agree to have a workshop maybe on the 21st, since we're already scheduled to meet, um, that would be wonderful. I would respectfully request that.
Um, thank you, Ms., um, thank you, Dr. Birdsong. Ms. Lucine? Yeah, um, I, I agree with a lot of the, the comments that have been made by my colleagues, Mr. Jordan and Ms. Campson. Um, in addition, you know, I think before we, I think those numbers are important to us because it would tell us what our resource needs are.
because it would tell us what our resource needs are and how we can support the administration in determining uh what the allocation uh needs are. Um, but back to some of the conversation we had earlier is, you know, I think what will impact uh those numbers will also be uh, you know, those families that, you know, maybe chose in person in June, but now they they want to remain virtual. And so I really believe that um surveying our families again, our families and our teachers again, uh is should be a first step, because some of those students that are self-contained also have underlying health conditions. And they may choose, um, you know, we we can make the assumption that they want to be in person, and some may not. And so I think it's important to ask them also, before we start making that plan, whether they are in fact choosing to come in person or virtual, or remain virtual. Um, certainly as more is known about uh this virus as well, and a lot has changed since June. Um, the other piece, and 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 to Ms. Campson, um, her point earlier, I think the other benefit of surveying our teachers is perhaps it would help support the VSA program uh for those that do then opt uh to be, to remain virtual, those teachers that want to stay virtual for whether, you know, they are in that high-risk group. Um, I think it'd be good to know that for that reason as well. The second thing is, we should be, when do you expect? I know there are surveys that went out to families and to teachers for virtual learning. And to Mr. Jordan's point about simultaneously strengthening uh what we are delivering right now, uh what, do you expect to have results back from that for the board um at that twenty first meeting? What, I'm not sure what the plan is, but um did you anticipate having that information for us?
Yes, from from the the survey that was recently administered from last week. Is that the survey you're referring to?
Yes, it was about virtual, virtual learning, experience.
Yes, we, we will definitely have that by the twenty first.
Okay, so I think that would also inform um some of these discussions. And then third, and I think most importantly, um, you know, we have the health metrics, uh, you know, that that indicate low transmission in schools and what would indicate higher transmission in schools. But what we haven't decided is, is what is our learning scenario going to be based on those health metrics? For instance, right now, our our new case incidence uh per a hundred thousand in the population is at the orange level, which is of higher, higher transmission risk, while our percent positivity is, um, well, if you look at the school metrics dashboard, it's green. But if you look at the uh the COVID, the most recent COVID nineteen data, it's, it's over five percent. So we have to determine what level of risk we are going to take um in in determining what kind of learning scenario we're going, we're going to um uh to implement when, when we have those different, those changes in health metrics. And then we also have to decide how we're going to move through uh the learning scenarios based on those health metrics. Are we going to look for improvement in trends over a two-week period, over a three-week period? What is that, and what is that going to look like? Our families need to know how we're making these decisions, and I think we need to be public and transparent about that, and everybody be on the same page, uh, because it could happen, you know, as quickly. We have a lot of um, I think, events, and you know, we talked, I I brought this up last week, potential high-risk events like Halloween, Thanksgiving, where people are gathering, potentially gathering our behaviors matters, Dr. Lindsay said last week. But you know, there, there are opportunities where we have to keep an eye on transmission. So I think we need to develop that if it hasn't been already developed. And that's, that was a question, um, you know, that I had uh have for, you know, Dr. Born, Dr. Bird Song. You may already have that um, uh, you know, the continuum of learning based on those health metrics already, you know, you may already be thinking about those. But I do think the administration needs to bring that back to the school board on what the recommendations are uh regarding the health metrics and how we're, what the recommendation is for learning.
Yeah, and and we again would recommend what what the CDC is recommending to you as it relates to dynamic decision-making. I think uh we need to utilize that information there. That's what I suggest. They also have a document that outlines the level of risk, and the board will have to determine what level of risk that you're willing to take.
Right, and and that, that, you know, and I provided that a few weeks ago too. But that just tells us what the, what the metric is that would, that would indicate low risk versus high risk. But they do not tell school, school divisions whether they should be virtual, whether they should be hybrid. This, the, the document does not tell them that. They have suggestions, but it doesn't, you know, it, it is a guidepost to to support schools in the decision-making. For instance, only we know whether we have all the mitigation strategies in place, you know, and only we can um determine that. So that's, that, that's information, like, I think we need to be able to quantify those things. Like, you know, the PPE, for instance, we have enough till Christmas, from what I heard earlier. So are we going to bring students back for, you know, six weeks? And then possibly um, you know, not have the supplies necessary to continue once we return from um the holidays? I mean, these are all really important questions that I think only we can, we can answer. So um I think we need to to get some answers uh to those questions. So um, so for the next meeting, I, I think if there's a recommendation around that, there are three main things that I think, you know, that I would like to see the administration do is to resurvey parents and teachers, so we can really find out how, what the, what the burden is um in those areas. Um, get the feedback on virtual learning from, from students and teachers, as you said. You know, you think you could have that by the next meeting. And then also get a recommendation from the administration about what the learning scenarios would look like based on those levels of risk uh that are based on the CDC metrics. So those are, those are some things that I think are next steps uh for decision-making for us. Um, so that's where I, I will end there.
Thank you, Ms. Basine. And you know, I, I just want to um mention that our student representative, Ms. Georgia Simpson, has been sitting very patiently through this discussion. And and since she's joined us today, I think I'd like to put her on the spot and give her an opportunity to um to just say some comments on what do you think of all of this? Um, you know, what, what are you, what are your thoughts, or do you have any questions for us? And um make sure that you take yourself off mute.
Um, thank you. I think everyone's brought up really good points, and I'm learning a lot, like, so much from this experience. And I think from a student perspective, it is really different, because, you know, I crave going back to school so much. But I also understand from the policy standpoint that that might not be possible unless certain things are put in place. And so I want to be as safe as possible, and even more so, I think it's important to consider that I'm also responsible for the health of my family that I'm going home to. And I mean, I think um Ms. Basine puts a really good point about the community does affect our school so much, even things like Halloween. Those, it might seem like a small consideration, but it might be great, because, you know, one Halloween event may very well affect the school system. I mean, going back to school on November fourth, only a few days after that seems kind of scary to me even to think about. And I think, sorry, I feel flustered. But um I think all of these considerations are important, and that students in the long term, even though we really do want to go back to school and be with our friends and have that, you know, social connection that we're lacking so much online, ultimately, our health is more important, and ultimately, you know, we are thinking about our families too. And so all of these precautions are understood and, you know, respected by the student body.
Thank you, Ms. Simpson. I appreciate your input.
Thank you, Georgia. That was very thoughtful.
Okay, um, so, Mr. Clanton, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I, I guess just looking at uh time here, I guess, Madam Chair, based on the recommendation that um I guess Mr. Jordan wanted some additional information and what Ms. Basine said. I'll say personally for me tonight, um, I'm still concerned about, there's some things that still just aren't answered. I think the administration has done a great job trying to address them. I just don't think that, based on some of the things, we're adequately prepared. Um, and uh, Georgia, your, your sentiments are exactly what um I think about each and every day when I listen to parents and others and teachers and folks who um, who uh reach out to me. And that is essentially, not only to think about their sa, health and safety themselves, but also their families. And I think about um the uh Health Department's presentation to us and the considerations, especially when we start taking about health conditions within Norfolk and the community that we serve. Um, and the Health Director said to us, we can't just look at the positivity rate and infection rate in Norfolk, because we know that we've got teachers that travel as far as we is North Carolina and other areas who are coming into our area. Um, so I, if we were trying to take any action on this tonight, I would not be in favor, and I just place that there. Um, I believe some additional time to solidify, answer some additional questions. Unfortunately, opening windows isn't, isn't flying with me too much, because we know that we're going to hit the winter. Um, and ventilation is a huge concern for me. Um, so I, I, I just, I need more. Um, I know that there are some parents who are pushing, 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 pushing. I want to get kids, having kids in school, having those, and 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 I think the only way you really mitigate this is by having small groups. And I think as Campson's right, you know, we have some students who are receiving that in person, some of our most disabled students with um in in need and C-Step. Um, and so that could work, but when we start touring on these other layers, and that's where I go back and agree with Mr. Jordan in the respect, we need to look at that first group, do it really well, and place all those things together. And then we can start talking about layering on some other things, but I, I'm not in favor tonight. And if we come back on the twenty first, my, my decision may change. Um, but just based on what I have here, I think it's a great start, Dr. Bird Song. I commend your team and what you all have put together here. Um, but I also have to think about the communities that we serve, and particularly uh these most vulnerable communities and the the families that our students have to go back to. And so that's just kind of where I am tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Clanton. Uh, Dr. Gabriel, can you wrap us up here, please?
I will try my best to wrap it up. I, I just, I, I really do appreciate all the comments that um my colleagues have shared. I don't think that there's any one of us that would, you know, disagree with all of the parental concerns, the staffing concerns, um, and I'm not going to repeat things that my colleagues have shared, because um it is seven oh five right now. But I think that at the end of the day, what we all have to understand is that we're trying to um do what's best for many entities. And I think we need to be very clear with, with what Dr. Bird Song has presented to us at baseline. So at baseline, we have a hybrid system, which they have based their research on resources that both incorporate bringing in the students that we said uh we wanted to bring in first, uh what it, which is, you know, what's nationally recommended. But it's also taking into consideration what they, what we can do safely. And so if we're going to take a detour from that, I want to understand if that is a direction that we're moving in, or if we are settled on, you know, this recommendation that has been put forth to us to pursue uh in giving direction to the administration on that, on our meeting for the twenty first. So that's the, that, that's one question that I have. And then um, secondly, uh, there has been, and I, and I might have missed this um in the, in the discussion, but as far as an internal advisory group with Dr. Bird Song and staff with regards to planning, but what about incorporation of external members? Um, is there any thought, thoughts about that, moving ahead, once a decision is made by the board?
So um, in the first regard, I think that we just, it, it's not so much that we're changing the groups that were the priority groups. It's that I, there's, I'm hearing that they, there's some members that need some more um clarification around those groups and some other implications of bringing them back. Um, and then for your second question on as to whether we want to put together a community advisory group? Is that what you're suggesting, moving forward?
I'm, I'm, I'm just asking Dr. Bird Song, if, I know that she has an internal group of staff members that are working on the planning purposes. Um, is there any thoughts moving forward for incorporating an ongoing group with external stakeholders to contribute to those discussions?
So that would be in addition, and we do have advisory.
Dr. Gibson and Cataldo have done a wonderful, not Cataldo, Paul have done a wonderful job facilitating these um, these meetings. Um, additionally, I have ongoing collaboration with Dr. Lindsay and her staff. Um, so um it's certainly something I would be open to if I felt we needed to move in that direction. But I, I'm extremely comfortable with the level of support that I have um at this time.
Okay, so um.
And, and I'd also like to add, Dr. Martin, um, I, I think Mr. Jordan made a good point, and I think Ms. Campson um mentioned this too. Um, as we talk about, you know, this being in a new process for everyone, wanting to do, you know, so much better for our students and families, and always wanting to um continuously improve. I, I would suggest that we go ahead and move with the Wednesday planning days for our teachers. Um, our teachers have worked so hard, um, they're, they're working so hard. And if we want to take virtual learning to the next level, we have got to provide them um opportunities, ongoing opportunities, more frequent opportunities for training and professional development. So although the board is not making any vote to, you know, on when we will be having, and when we'll be, we will be implementing the in-person instruction model, we do want to go ahead, starting next week, and providing that time for our teachers to engage in training and professional development, and also doing some other things that they may need to do to get their classrooms uh together in the event that the board decides to move in the direction of opening up our schools for our children.
So, Madam Chair, in that, in that spirit of what the superintendent's asking, may uh provide a motion?
Yeah, I was, I was just going to ask that, yes. So we need to, we need, um, go ahead.
No problem. Um, Madam Chair, I move that um, starting next Wednesday, I'm not quite sure what day that is.
The twelfth.
The twelfth, uh, that we, from that day forward until the superintendent uh comes back to the, to the school board, that that every Wednesday be designated as a professional teacher, professional development, or workday. You want to call it, Dr. Bird Song?
Um, a lot of things will be occurring on that day, so I don't want to close this in, in, into a box, um, because there will be some things that principals will want to do with their, their staffs as well. But we need that to be an asynchronous day for students.
Got it, so.
That, it gives us the flexibility to do training, professional development, set up classrooms, if teachers want to hold uh meetings with um, with students, conference calls, they have the flexibility to do all of that, so I would.
Starting on October twelfth, that uh every Wednesday be considered an asynchronous day.
It's the fourteenth, Mr. Clanton.
The fourteenth will be an asynchronous day.
Moving forward on Wednesdays.
Got it, on Wednesdays.
Just a moment, are you, you're sure that, I thought it was the twelfth.
I think it's the twelfth.
It's the week of the twelfth, but the Wednesday is actually the fourteenth.
Oh, okay, okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Clanton, so, so we understand it, so we, we, the motion, motion is?
Starting on October the twelfth.
Fourteenth.
For, Seattle got me confused. October the fourteenth, that every Wednesday will be an asynchronous learning day. Um, yeah, asynchronous learning day until the superintendent comes back to us with, with any changes.
Second?
Second, Ms. Campson, and discussion? Mr. Jordan?
Can you, can you just explain that uh a little more for me, what that, what that means in terms of uh student learning under the current environment?
And under, so, under the current environment, uh, Mr. Jordan, uh, students have a regular virtual day of instruction. They may have um asynchronous, well, they do have asynchronous and synchronous activities going on, on those days. And so now we will just be um taking out the. And so now we will just be um, taking out the, the synchronous piece with the Zoom meetings for teachers. So that they have the time, we've heard it, and I'm trying to be responsive to my teachers' needs. They are working hard and they're asking for more time for training, for professional development, and to do some of those things that they would need to do with their building principles and preparation of the student's possible return to the classroom.
So on that, on that Wednesday, then are, we still take attendance? How, just explain to me how that, I'm trying to figure out what it means for students and, and families.
We will still be taking attendance, just like we would in, on any other um, asynchronous day. Remember the um, Virginia Department of Education allowed us some flexibility on, and what attendance looks like. So we will be using um, some of those, uh, uh, we will be taking attendance according to that. You know, you know, monitoring the student engagement, whether, you know, checking assignments. You know, definitely in alignment with what we're doing right now.
Thank you.
And then Ms. Smith?
Yes, Dr. Birdsong, can you share with us the pros and cons associated with breaking up um, the learning session and going to a completely um, asynchronous mode on a, in the middle of the week versus doing it at the beginning or the end of the week?
Well, a- according to the feedback that I'm receiving, the teachers really want it to be in the middle of the week. And it's also a good break for students from screen time. So that gives students a, a good break. They have two days on, they have a day off and two day, two more days on, and then they have the weekend.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all the hands I see. Okay, um, Ms. Tanner, please call the rule.
Basine? Hi. Campson?
Hi.
Clanton?
Hi.
Gabriel?
Hi.
Jordan?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Martin?
Hi. Yay. Action, woo. Okay, so then um, just the clear direction to Dr. Birdsong would be um, and her staff would be that uh, we will have a workshop added to our s- October twenty first meeting. And um, we will expect a presentation that addresses the concerns and questions that were brought up so that we have a clear plan to vote on. Um, Ms. Basine, would you like to add something?
Yeah, I guess I, I want to get um, a sense of whether there's agreement to resurvey our parents and our teachers. Um, I think.
Yes.
I, I don't think I heard, I don't think I heard um, agreement on that.
I didn't hear opposition.
I agree. Yeah, I don't see how we can't get that data in for it, so I, I just know that, that was a part of the plan.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure, okay.
We got your back, Tanya.
What'd you say?
I said in something around and the teachers, something about health, um, those who have the underlying conditions, I think.
How about if you email, I, I'd like to hear, um, send me an email with uh, just to clarify any points that you, you made today and I will uh, make sure that Dr. Birdsong gets that. By the, by the end of this week?
Yeah, forgot, put a, put a date on it and uh.
Close the business on Friday, okay?
If we could get it before that, that would be helpful because every day matters for us.
On Thursday, can any, can anyone agree to that?
Tomorrow, if you could, what about noon Friday?
Yeah.
Noon Friday, okay, well.
Well, it's fresh.
Right, and just clarifying, you mean any other items that we need for the next workshop?
Yeah. Okay, and, and I don't want a long exa- you know, long list, but I think.
No, of course, right.
What was discussed today, make sure, send us a list. You know, I'm going to obviously go back and, and re-watch this video and try to catch as much as I can, but you know, I want you to.
Right.
Be, support that by providing your list of things that were discussed today.
Okay, but we, we are directing the administration to survey, they can begin that planning to survey our families and our teachers.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, great.
Dr. Gabriel, go ahead.
Yep, so when we come back, so when we leave today's meeting, we are leaving without any without any action about whether or not kids are coming back in person for November the fourth, correct? When we leave today's meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
We're not ready to vote on that quite yet.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm hearing, okay. And then when we do come back on the twenty first and the workshop, the proposal that you are asking us to send the feedback on, in addition to the other questions and comments, the health metrics and, and all of that, we are still looking at the hybrid model where it's two days a week, an asynchronous day, and then two days a week. Is that what we are still discussing? Or, or is, or is that different? I just want to be clear on what we are coming back to discuss so that we can take action on it.
Doc, Dr. Birdsong? I mean, I haven't heard you say that you wanted to produce a different recommendation, so can you, would, should, would you, is that something you would do or would we be voting on this hybrid model that was proposed today?
Again, based on the, the research that we have done and in accordance with the resources that we have at this time, that is the reason that we brought forth the hybrid model for your consideration.
Um, Ms. Smith and then Ms. Basine and Ms. Campson?
My understanding is the recommendation could potentially be different based on the outcome of responses to um, parents who are currently have, who have currently chosen in person, who may choose uh, virtual. So if a considerable amount of parents choose virtual, then the numbers may already offset themselves to override, if you will, the, the um, staggered A and B schedule. So in a schedule that is consistent with or consecutively five days, four days, whatever the outcome may be.
Right, I, yeah, I would agree with that.
Yep, so do I, yep. That was what, and I, I take back my comment, she, she asked it, clarified it.
Okay, um, Ms. Smith, I'm not Ms. Smith, sorry, Ms. Campson, was that who I said next? I'm getting.
I think you said Smith before me.
You spoke and now it's your turn.
Oh. Sorry, I must have had a mind meld. Um, just, I, I know we made some suggestions on, on that and, 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 bleh, how late is it? And uh, Dr. Birdsong did say that she would reconsider the um, special needs children and the ELL ones, that she would look at that, not, and so, is, is that still a possibility, Dr. Birdsong? It's still on the list, Ms. Campson.
Thank you.
On my four-page list, yes.
Yeah, well, I got a lot of pages here too.
I got more than you.
Probably you do. Okay. Do we need to, do we need more clarification? We're good? Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you, thank you, administration, for such a wonderful presentation and for helping uh, for you, you know, helping guide us through this. Um, you know, we thought that closing schools was difficult and, you know, this is also is difficult, you know, reopening them safely. Uh, so it's a lot to navigate and I appreciate everyone's patience and do, and due diligence in, in creating the map, you know, we're writing the map right now on this journey, so. So thank you so much. All right, with that, we are going to move on to, on our agenda. To, wait, let's see, I had the agenda right in front of me. Um, to section eight, our le- Legislative Affairs Update. And um, I'd like to welcome Ms. Jana Casab- Casabun and Mr. Ronald Jordan from Advana Strategies who um, who are going to present the Legislative Affairs Update. Hi.
Hi, how are you guys? Before I do anything, I want to commend you all for all the work that you've done. Just listening to this meeting, I, I've been so impressed by how you're, you're working everything out to keep everyone safe and, and you're really taking extraordinary measures. So I have to say you, you're doing a great job. Um, I, Dr. Birdsong, um, Chair Martin, Vice Chair Jordan, and the rest of the school board members. This is our first time that we get to talk to you this year. And um, it's an extraordinary year in many ways, but um, the way it's extra, been extraordinary for us is that the special session was called by the governor. Um, Karen, are you showing the um, the slides?
We still have the group picture.
Yep. It's there. You see it? I, I don't want to, I mean, you can always read the slides, but. Channel forty-seven switched it, we're there. Ready, okay, um, yeah, for the second slide, um, Governor Northam called the General Assembly to return on August eighteenth to address issues related to the state budget, um, criminal justice reform and the coronavirus pandemic. Um, we work year round, so it's the regular session, it's the veto session and any special sessions that they, they have to hold. Um, we've had budget issues that have brought people back. And the one year we had a special session that almost ran right into the um, the regular session. So um, you have to be really uh, flexible and um, ready to adapt to those things. Um, during any session, what we do, and you guys are familiar with this, um, we work to advance action items and support um, any interests that, that you guys have, guiding them through the legislative process. Um, normally the committee, um, subcommittees and individual delegates and senators whom we deal with. Um, we also play defense, which means that we actively protect um, Norfolk state funding and um, kill any mandate staffing, staffing requirements and things like that that um, sound great at the state level, but then when they trickle down, they, they can cost you guys a lot of time and money. So um, that's what we work to, to nip in the bud. All along the way where um, we try our best to communicate with all you guys and, and be available whenever you have questions and um, and that, that sometimes is, is often, the pace of the regular session is frenetic. And this session has been much slower in a lot of ways. Um, when the House and Senate started the special session, they were supposed to um, adopt rules um, that would uh, limit, usually it, it's revolving, um, in, involving bill limits. Um, the actual deadlines for submitting legislation. And um, and of course you have crossover at the middle where the, the House bills that have passed go to the Senate and vice versa. Um, this session has been really loose. Um, they didn't adopt any joint rules, so we don't know how long it's going to go. Um, we don't know um, when, when they're going to adjourn. We could actually go um, right into the next session. But um, we were hoping that uh, because they're attacking, yeah, that's a good word for it, these bills, um, now that when the um, the regular short session comes in January, it won't be as intense as it usually is, and it may be as short as thirty days. Um, constitutionally, the short session in odd years can go as short as thirty days. Um, usually it's at least forty-five, um, but with this one has already been as long as um, as a long session. So, so it's very unpredictable at this point. Um, we've been um, working to, oh, you can advance this slide. What's different about this special session? Um, I kind of went into the, the deadlines and the lack of rules. Um, the other strange thing is that the House and the House committees are um, are all meeting virtually. And there are a hundred people in the House. So um, it's not very easy to testify at this point and you have to give public comment in writing. Um, they, they decide who gets in the room, um, the virtual room and who gets to speak. Um, but usually you can sign up the night before and if they have, um, they have time, they'll take a couple people who are supporting the bill and then a couple who are opposing the bill. And um, and let people talk, but they, some of the um, the committees were, were packed with bills and they only gave the patrons two minutes to explain the bill. And then um, commenters were only allowed to speak for a minute, if that, or sometimes two, if they got lucky. Um, some committees haven't even had meetings. Um, the House Education Committee has not met yet, um, which the Senate is not happy about because the Senate met and, um, and passed um, some of their bills. Uh, it's actually the Health, Health, Health and Education Committee. So they had a lot of health bills and they actually had to meet three times with full dockets. And, but the bills that they passed, they sent to the House. And the House is, is not having any meetings. So those bills at the end um, will die upon adjournment. And anything that, um, that hasn't been taken up, the um, the delegates and senators will have to refile uh, for the regular session, which is coming up in January. Um, let's see. We um, a lot of the legislation that we saw impacting schools were um, were, one was a nurse ratio where they wanted, they want one nurse assigned to every school. Um, that would have cost a lot of people, um, a lot of school divisions, a lot of money. And um, not only that, but the original bill said registered nurses, which they later amended to um, LPNs could be also considered that way because they, they know there are a lot of communities where they just would not be able to recruit and retain um, a nurse for every school. It would have cost Fairfax, I think it was seventeen million dollars just to get, just to fill, fulfill that um, that ratio. So um, the, the collective bargaining and sick leave bills didn't really go anywhere. Um, the, the scope was pretty narrow and it, sometimes they just weren't docketed. And if they weren't docketed, then um, the committees did not um, talk about them or address them and they just died because they're, they're left in there. Okay, um, accomplishments. We did have some um, notable accomplishments so far that we're hoping will stick. Um, we worked on, um, if you, if you read the reports that we send weekly, um, we worked with Delegate Cliff Hayes to ensure that um, a technical amendment, let me go back, the, the governor um, and his staff made a technical amendment to the budget because the sales tax revenues were um, were affected by the recession. So um, by the pandemic. So that's, that was one of the reasons that he called the um, the special session in the first place. But when we went through the budget, we saw that um, the sales tax estimate that they, they revised would have um, cut a hundred and eighty-eight million, I think it was, from the, from the entire um, state's education um, for each year. And that would have been one point five million dollars out of your budget that you're currently working on, um, and then another one point five next year. So um, so we worked with um, with Delegate Cliff Hayes and had him put a budget amendment in so that that wouldn't happen, to correct that problem. And he um, he did present it and it was included in the um, in the House budget. So um, and there was also, uh, the other one was the average daily membership. And that one was the um, ADM that um, I'm sure Dr. Birdsong follows pretty closely. Uh, determines how much funding you guys get. And usually, in a normal year. uh determines how much funding you guys get, and usually in a normal year, they use the number from September thirtieth to determine how much um funding each school gets. So um that, of course, this year for many districts went down in September. So we had um, we had gone and asked them to um to skip this September's numbers and go straight to to March, and that has also been included um in the budgets. So we're we're hoping that um that those things will go through, and if not, we will have them again on um on the legislative program that we're preparing for you for the regular session. Part of all our planning and and what really helps is that we have so many legislation legislative liaison meetings and coalitions that we've built uh that we meet with pretty often and um and go over these things so that we can all work together to to make sure that um your interests are protected and that your funding's not cut and that it if anything is increased. So so we've been working a lot on that. Let's see, our um what happened, what will happen now, the budgets have been approved with that the Senate approved the the Ha- the um House budget because they switched over, so the Senate uh approv- approved the House budget, but with um.
John, I can bring it up to speed uh. Okay. All right, thanks. Um, good evening, everyone. We know you're uh tired, and we'll we'll step it up here. Both Houses have passed their respective budgets. The House budget is much better for public ed. Both budgets contain the ninety-five million dollars that we need to hold everybody harmless on the sales tax. And the source of that is the gray machines revenue. Both Houses have the two hundred million dollars that they directed the governor to provide to public schools out of the CARES Act money. Um, the House also includes flexibility, uh much welcome flexibility on use of lottery funds, textbook money, and on uh staffing standards for EL and um one uh one other um group of kids. And in in addition, the Senate had, uh excuse me, school council positions. And the uh the Senate, on the other hand, uh the Senate does not have those. In addition, the Senate does have a five hundred dollar bonus in the second year, uh contingent upon a sufficient revenues. A two percent bonus, excuse me, in in there for um teachers in the second year. Where we are now, both Houses have passed them. This week, the Senate will take up the House budget, reject it, and formally get it into conference committee. Before we can get it in, before the budget can be passed, the differences have to be reconciled formally. We've learned today that the uh chairs and vice chairs of the two main committees have been meeting in formally, uh in effect, shortening this process uh and 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 have bringing the staff in uh to work out differences, and that they have substantially, uh even though either House is uh not pay or dealt with the other's budget, it's not in conference yet, they've informally resolved many of the differences between the two budgets already. As as John had indicated, the all the previous rules that we've known in traditions have kind of got, a lot of them have gone out the window during this special session. Apparently, the the form and nature of a conference committee where senior members from each committee get together and decide and work out differences is gonna be uh not happening this session. The Senate will likely, the House bill is always the vehicle for getting the budget, so the Senate will act on the House budget this week. That's the plan. They will reject the House budget, send it back to the House, which will insist upon its amendments and request a committee of conference, it'll go back to the Senate, and um and the conferees will be appointed, and they will, who will agree, and the conferees will be appointed. If indeed they have uh resolved everything informally, if the chairs and the have involved, have resolved everything informally, then the thing should go very quickly from that point on. Uh, the challenge in all this is, John, I indicated, is the remote or virtual nature of the of the groups. When you've got one group on one end of the Hall of the Capitol, the other end, uh on the uh the other house on the other end, you meet in the middle, you literally meet in the middle and hash a lot of things out, but meeting virtually a- and on different days is and and on different days, uh that is is complicated this a bit. So I think it's safe to say with, that we will be well, well further in, well deep into this month before we see a resolution. Uh, but I think the thing that we've been working on for you guys is to tell people that you need to have consistency. You need to have consistency and certainty in your funding in order to make plans for every, deal with the pandemic, and including issues associated with reopening schools. That's kind of where we are at this point. Back to you, John.
Okay, um, actually, does anyone have any questions about what we've already talked about?
Roll on, roll on.
We also wanted to talk about, a little bit about the um the upcoming session because we're putting together your legislative package. And um, as I said, there'll be a couple things on there that if they're not resolved during the um during this special session, they will definitely be in our package. And that would be to correct that sales tax technical amendment in the state budget, which we we are prepared to have um to file it another budget amendment because it was in both years. It was this this current year and the next year, and they may only um fix it for this year in the special session, so we'll have to do the whole process again. Um, the other one is um the average daily membership that I I discussed before, keeping that steady to to keep the funding coming. The other things are, many of them are um from your package last year that that um I know that you'll still want to leave in there. And I wanted just to kind of make you guys think about what you would like to do for next year, if there's anything that um that is of utmost importance that you want to include in there. Otherwise, um we will just revise it based upon what we heard tonight and um and get it out to you guys so you can look at it before next week.
Given the extended nature of the special session, um we don't feel quite the angst that we normally do to kind of get this done quickly. That your delegation is still focused on everything in a special session. In addition, the the governor has indicated that he doesn't like some of the things that the General Assembly wants to do. Uh, he's worried about cash, uh and the General Assembly dips into some of the cash that he had left on the table. And that's been complicated by the Trump administration's desire, or at least the tweet today, or the latest hour or two, they didn't want to do a a next round of CARES relief because the governor, I think, was and most folks were depending on, if nothing else out of that, getting flexibility with the money that we, more flexibility with the money we currently have. So there's even more pressure to keep cash in the bank. Frankly, in favor and because of fear of a further downturn in the economy.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm, I don't know why I'm so dark all of a sudden, um. So I, are you finished with the, is that, is all, all you had?
I think, yeah, I think what John was gonna, was saying, and it's just to to kind of bring you back, was that we're gonna take what you all had in your package last year, update that, put in the items that we think will be resolved, that deal with the items that we think will be resolved in the funding items in the special session. If it turns out they're not resolved, keep them in, put them in, and bring you all a draft back for you to look at to uh keep the process moving if that meets with the board's approval.
Yeah, because I I was actually anticipating this, because I didn't, I really wasn't, couldn't didn't think there was a lot of new priorities that we needed to add, but um of course, the next um option for us is is to discuss that, but um uh, Ms. Basine, you have your hand up. Did you want to add to that?
Um, yeah, it, um unless you want to get through the presentation, and I can wait.
Let's get, let's get through the presentation, and then we'll have discussion. Thank you.
Okay, well, I think that's the end of the presentation. Um, we pretty much, we tried to go through it pretty quickly because we realized that you guys were um tired.
We're used to it. We're used to marathon.
In a marathon meeting.
Marathon zoomers.
Well, any question, we'll take any questions that you guys have, or if you want to have us work on some topics, that would, that would be the next thing.
Okay, Ms. Basine, go ahead.
Um, and I'm sorry, and I was trying to look up the bill number, um. But I know, I think it's HB seventy-four, and as you know, um you know, we've, it it's been in our legislative priorities, but you know, mental health has been, you know, a big area for our division. And so um I believe, I think it's HB seventy-four that where, that is going to um require mental health training for teachers and other personnel, and I know that's something that we have been, that this division has taken initiative around. Um, but you know, I think that's something that I would like us as a division, because we have been kind of at the fore, you know, or or have been working to expand and strengthen those training opportunities. You know, I would like to see us support um uh support that bill. Um, but I think I'd like to learn more about it, what it entails, is there uh funding attached to it, or is it, is it going to be an unfunded mandate? You know, I have some questions about it. But certainly, you know, any legislation that supports expanding opportunities uh around mental health in our school division is uh, you know, something I'd like, I'd like to be a priority area.
There, there was a bill dealing with that during the regular session, and it was clearly gonna come down as an unfunded mandate.
It was, okay.
Financial literacy and the whole list of others.
Okay, okay, well, that's good to know. Um, and the other thing, um you know, we've always had it as a policy statement and not necessarily uh at the top in our priorities. And one thing, um you know, that we've had year after year after year is the importance of, you know, uh creating socioeconomically diverse schools. And uh with with everything that's been going on, I think that's, you know, even more important, we passed an anti-racism resolution uh among this board in this division, and I I would like to see that be a legislative priority. You know, to reflect what we are, what we are valuing and holding uh true, um to move that up in in the priorities, aside from just a policy statement. So there are just, um, I'll just keep it brief right now, but um that's, that's something I'd like to see us revise uh the draft.
You can always text us or um or send me like a little a list, like you did last year, of things that that you want me to um to do some further research in and and write up for you. Anyone can, uh anytime, you can do that, or um actually in the the presentation, all our contacts are in there. So don't hesitate to do that.
Okay.
Dr. Gabriel?
So I would definitely leave the items that we currently have in the priority package. Um, and we can enhance upon them a- as as you all see, um with regards to the climate of the assembly right now. But I think that what COVID nineteen has really done, and we have touched upon this at several meetings, is that it has brought to light the inequities as far as facility infrastructure, and it goes back to our conversations that we were having about the age of our buildings, the ventilation systems, um uh windows that open, uh keeping up on grounds. Uh, and it 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 further, um it further enhances the gaps that we have here in Norfolk. And then you just tie that evidence in that Dr. Lindsay presented to us about um our students um who are African-American or um Hispanic, and you know, while we're trying to bring them back into the school because we care so much about their educational and their educational gaps, at the same time, we're also trying to figure out, how can we do that in a healthy setting in the buildings that we have? And when you have a city that's strapped because of its economic situation, and then we don't have the support from uh state on capital improvements, we are really left um in a very difficult situation. And so I really want us to hit home to our legislators how important it is to fund infrastructure needs for our schools, for the health and safety of our students and staff and staff. And then piggyback on that technology, because we don't necessarily count technology in that, but you do want to have a building that you can get Wi-Fi in, and you can make a phone call, and a teacher can pro- project an excellent virtual program from her classroom and not have to worry about buying a twenty-two inch monitor and setting up all of these other things. This is what is being expected of to us, and everything just keeps getting passed and passed down until it just falls on our shoulders, and they just need to understand there are dollars that are going to be attached to this, and and we really need the support from the state in order to do these things.
Right.
Mr. Jordan, go ahead.
Uh, I have a question first. Uh, can you explain the um the Big Eight? Uh, Norfolk's role in it, and um and I noticed this year, uh I guess Norfolk has somehow gotten included in this Big Eight. Wasn't really clear on um, I think I know who they are, that I guess the eight largest school divisions in the Commonwealth. But if you can kind of explain the Big Eight, and in particular, how Norfolk, who may be on the smaller end of the Big Eight, uh fits within the expectations of 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 that, of that Big Eight coalition.
Let me take a run at that. The a- as you said, the Big Eight are the eight largest school divisions, and Norfolk is um one of that group. The the idea behind it, and it was a kind of a creation of a group of superintendents, and the legislative liaisons for those groups have kind of have picked it up and continued it, is because when you look at representation in the General Assembly, the Big Eight's delegations control what goes on. That was, that was fundamentally, that was the biggest reason for that coalition. Um, and if those eight superintendents could get together on a particular issue that was that crosscut among all of them where they had common interest, and as you know, Mr. Jay, they they tend to, in most school divisions, the the issues tend to be crosscutting. That if they could, then they could help use the clout that they have with the state's largest delegations at the General Assembly to help lift all the boats.
Yeah, well, in in work I've been involved with, the, you know, Norfolk has a disproportionate shares of uh schools and students in challenging environments. I don't know if Richmond made the Big Eight, but they would be in there. All of the Big Eight have some. Uh, Norfolk has a a disproportionate share. And so I think it's important that if we're gonna be a part of the Big Eight, that the Big Eight understands uh Norfolk's circumstances, similar to what Dr. Gabriel just mentioned. Uh, some of the Big Eight are flooded with resources to build new schools. That's not our position. Uh, at least that's not our current status, I should say. So I think that if you can, if we're gonna be a part of the Big Eight, if we can have some sense that we can provide you with support so that the Big Eight is advocating, um as you talk about your crosscutting, uh some of those things that we deal with disproportionately being you know, fifty percent non-taxable real estate and all the things that we deal with, that some of the others of the Big Eight uh don't deal with at all. So I just think it's important that, I think it's fine for us to jump on uh issues that that we all share, but I would like to see um the Big Eight pledge or what their agenda is that aligns specifically with the priorities that that we have established.
Yeah, actually, um actually, um Sharon has, I'm sorry, Dr. Birdsong, has been involved in this uh from the very beginning. And it's been, how long have we been doing it, Ronnie? Three years?
I I would say it's been about three years. It started before Dr. Birdsong came on. But they, but I think, I hear you, Mr. Jordan, we hear you. And I think, especially on the infrastructure side, while there, a lot of the, some of the Big Eight schools uh have needs in in terms of infrastructure or rebuilding infrastructure like Norfolk does, uh they they also have, as you know, some infrastructure needs on the flip side to meet growing populations. So, but we we hear you, and um I think that affirmation will not be a problem.
Yeah, the other thing for the the board is, whenever we get to the point of talking about uh our priorities, um as Ms. Basine said, you know, we've passed some resolutions, there are a lot of conversations going on around um uh real equity when it comes to uh uh, real equity when it comes to, uh, uh, human resources, um, culturally affirming curriculum, things of those types that I think have significant impact, uh, on Norfolk that. What I, what I'm anticipating, some of the things that the general assembly is willing to take on, and that the governor is willing to push in his last year, that if you can help us to make sure that we have some of those things included in our list of priorities, so we can share with our delegation, or our delegation can share with us, some of those things that they are uh, advocating and pushing in this upcoming session, that, you know, we can get behind and, and help, help get through the, the, the general assembly.
Well, one, one thing I think that's important to note is that if something comes up and some of the larger school divisions that are up in, in, um, Northern Virginia, at, who have quite, quite a lot more resources, um, if it does come up and seven of the big eight have, have the issue and wanna send a letter, but one does not, we don't send it. Because it has to be approved by all eight school divisions, and it runs by every single superintendent. So, um, so that, that's, that's the way we've been, uh.
And, and ultimately, and Dr. Birdsong has vetoed one or two.
Well, good for her. And, and likewise, you know, there was the, um, coalition that was evolving from, uh, small rural challenged districts and urban districts. Um, and I, and I know Jay Jones was actively involved with, with some of that, uh, Delegate Jones. But I think there's also an opportunity for us to make sure that we, we push from that side as well.
Okay, um, any other questions or suggestions? I'm sorry, I'm having trouble seeing. Okay, um, well, I wanna thank you all for your patience, um, and, and your presentation. And, um, what I'd like to do, well, let me request this, um, could one of you, uh, um, Ms. Kasabun or Mr. Jordan, could one of you send us our final priority list from last year?
Sure.
Okay, email.
I, I can send you the one from last year and the one that I've prepared for this year.
Okay, okay.
I have a first draft that's, that's ready for you guys to go through and see, and pick and choose.
Okay, that would be wonderful. Um, if you, you wanna go ahead and, um, email it to me, and I'll make sure everyone gets that, gets both of those. I'd really appreciate it. And, um, and that takes me, you know, so next on our list was to discuss the leg- our legislative priorities, which, um, I think we're, what it'd be best if we just wait till we get that list, go through it, and then, or those two lists go through them. And, um, and so we will, we'll do that discussion at another time. Is that okay with everyone? And let's go ahead and move on to agenda item eight point zero three and invite your legislator to school day. And, um, and so, uh, Mr. Jordan or Mr. Clinton, would you like to say anything to that at this point?
I'll yield, I'll, frankly, I think, uh, I know Mr. Clinton may be thinking the same thing, but I think we may be yielding to you, cuz I think you're gonna give us some framework, or some ideas that you had, that you wanted us to work on. So, Mr. Clinton, I don't know if you have anything more than that.
I know we don't agree most of the time, but we agree to that, yeah.
I can just see if anyone wanted to step up, but, um, no, that's fine, so, um.
Uh, Dr. Martin, just to be clear, stepping up is fine. If you're, if you're asking Mr. Clinton and I to go off and prepare something, I'm confident we can do that. But what I thought you said, that you had some ideas that you wanted us to consider before we started framing it, and, and that's what I'm saying, we need to get those ideas.
Yeah, sure, no, I was just kidding. So I think I've communicated this to both you separately, um. So what, uh, despite the fact that, um, you know, schools are closed, uh, the school buildings are closed at the moment, and we normally bring, invite our legislators to come and actually tour a school, and then we will have a breakfast and, um, or it's kind of, you know, munchy type thing, and then we sit down and have, uh, a real discussion around our legislative priorities. Um, you know, just so despite the fact that, that the buildings are closed, I still thought that it would be really important to give our legislators a, um, an experience, a virtual experience, so that they could actually experience what, um, is going on in our classroom and how education is continuing. And so, um, I wanted to continue, um, the Bring Your Legislator to School Day. And so what I envisioned, envisioned was, um, scheduling times where they can maybe pop in to, as a guest, to some of the classrooms, the virtual classrooms, and, um, and so, and then have that experience, and then, um, pop into a group setting where that, where we could, uh, go into our discuss, you know, presentations and discussions around our legislative priorities. And, um, and so, you know, really handle it in this, a similar manner, where it'd be earlier in the day, and, um, and, you know, still make a, a really nice presentation to them, and, um, be hospitable as always. Um, and, and, and continue with that discussion. So that's what I have, um, asked Mr. Jordan and Mr. Clinton to organize for us, and of course, with the help of Ms. Tanner, we'll need to send out, figure, figure out a date, um, obviously coordinate, um, with, uh, Dr. Birdsong, uh, which classrooms might be, you know, good, and maybe see, maybe ask them what grade they'd like to sign in on. Um, all of that, all those details I leave to you. Um, I trust that you'll, um, you'll carry this through in a, in a fabulous way. Um, but, so that was my vision. I just, I, I don't want to, I think this is an opportunity here to just show them how well we're doing in the virtual setting. Um, you know, many of them may not have experienced this at all. Um, you know, not having young children in the school systems, and, and so I just really would like to take this opportunity to show that we can do, we can still shine during adversity. So any questions to that?
So, Mr. Jordan, um, uh, definitely based on what you outlined, um, Dr. Martin. Uh, maybe, Mr. Jordan, we can touch base along with whoever Dr. Birdsong designates from the administration, and we can put some, Dr. Paul, um, put a document together that we could, um, maybe upload up, uh, by the next meeting on the twenty-first, um, and then kinda roll from there.
Yeah, um, you just reminded me, there was a piece I, I talked to Dr. Birdsong about is, you know, as, maybe a video of showing, I know there's some that ma- that have already been put together for her present, for her superintendent reports, to show what a virtual day might look like. Um, some of what our, what our reopening looked like, some of our preparations that we, you know, give context to it. Um, some of the preparations that have been put in place, uh, so that they have that piece as well.
Yeah, I, I, I think we can do that, agree with Mr. Clinton. One thing, um, maybe I would add for the, for us to consider, uh, since we've spent most of the day having conversations about, um, some children possibly transitioning back to, uh, to in-person. I can't remember the exact date that we may come up with for, uh, for this meeting, but I think oftentimes it's fall, well, at this point, it'll be sometime in November, I suspect, um, that maybe it is an, an opportunity for us, um, as a governance team and with the legislators to actually visit a school or two and see, uh, some of the wonderful things that will be done in terms of, you know, what we saw today. In terms of, uh, what the buildings would look like and the classrooms would look like as part of, uh, any potential, uh, in-person transitioning, uh, transitioning back.
Mm-hmm, yeah, that's, um, that's, thanks for, um, bringing that up, because, uh, you know, at the time, I was thinking about this, this was a couple of months ago. And, um, I just, I think I, I also assumed that because they're meeting virtually and we're meeting virtually, that, um, that we, you know, we would ke- keep it virtual, but, um, you know, you, you two can talk through that, um, and just, you know, and work it out, so.
And just keep in mind that we're trying to, as much as possible, keep, you know, visitors out of the building as much as possible. Not saying that is what wouldn't work, but just, just keep that in mind as you're thinking about people from the outside going into classrooms with, with our kids, cuz we don't know what we've been exposed to, not, uh, you know, just keep that in mind as you're planning, that's all.
Oh, yeah, good point, and that, my, yeah, and I was thinking of trying to avoid, uh, you know, the social distancing piece, but it would be real live experience of, um, of what we've been talking about. And I think maybe, I know I would appreciate seeing it in real live person. And I think as we're communicating our needs to our legislators, some of them may also need to experience it as well.
Well, I don't wanna be overly prescriptive, but that might be a piece, you know, if they're not comfortable, you know, because of safety measures, that maybe that's a piece that we put in the video. So. Any, everyone good? All right, um, all right, moving on to future agenda items nine point zero one. Oh, Dr. Birdsong.
Um, we skip policy, and I think.
Oh, I'm sorry, did we?
Take care of that before we leave this meeting. I know it, it's a, it's been a long meeting, but, um, I, I, I think we need to pay attention to, uh, policy before we leave.
Yeah, right, I have it right here. Okay, um, policy, who would like to present on policy, item seven point zero one?
So, uh, good evening again, Chairwoman Martin, Vice Chair Jordan, members of the board, Dr. Birdsong. Um, this evening, the Policy Review Committee recommends the posted changes to all the policies that were uploaded to board docs for today's meeting. As requested, apology change, a policy change overview document was created and posted with the policies to assist each of you in reviewing the updates. A few notes about specific policies. The Policy Review Committee has recommended a first and second reading of JFC, which relates to student conduct. Both policies, GBA slash JFHA and JFHA slash GBA, have several changes to accommodate the Title IX changes from the U.S. Department of Education. And finally, as you're aware, policy BCF has been edited to match the suggested amendments from VSBA, which has created the need for a regulation to support advisory committees to the board. Therefore, BCFR is a new regulation to support the changes to BCF. At this time, the Policy Review Committee and my colleagues are prepared to answer questions that you may have.
Okay, so open the floor for questions.
Well, I have some.
Okay. Mr. Jordan, go ahead.
Uh, okay, um, so the, the BCF regulation, I know that typically, um, you know, we don't, we don't vote on the, the regulations, but we are considering the change in policy, and so you all have recommended um, some regulations there, um. Have, having worked on this, uh, a few times, I recognize s- some of the, uh, Virginia Beach model language, which I, which I appreciate, um, but I still have some, uh, questions, um, in terms of, um, duties that we are, um, giving to the clerk versus the superintendent or her designate. Also think we need to, um, take another look at, um, if I read it correctly, the potential of having three one-year appointments for some committees versus, um, just doing a three-year appointment. Uh, I think we need to consider the, the, the three-year, uh, in some instances, um, for, for continuity's sake. I get the idea of having, um, a three-year limit. But I think if, if every year, um, somebody, we have to go through the, the process and somebody else has to go through the process, I think it can potentially not give us the, the, the stability that we need in, in some areas. So it may be easier, you know, I made some notes, and it may be easier for me to share those notes with you all. But just at a high level, um, those were some of the items that I, that I recognized. And I still recommend that we keep the, the recommendations for, see, the regulations for, as you all have it written now, for CAC, GAC, and the CT Advisory Committee as separate regulations versus being included in one big regulation. Uh, because I think it provides, um, better ease in tracking if we wanted to change a regulation or if the policy changed to require a regulation update for it to be unique to that particular advisory board versus all being rolled up into one regulation. It's not something I wanna dive on the sword over, but it's just, uh, just a recommendation I think, uh, we should consider. So that was BCF, um, for, uh, JGDZ, um, student suspensions and expulsion. There's, there's language that, um, that we're adding that says the school board will allow a student who has been suspended or expelled the opportunity to complete academic assignments during the period of suspension or expulsion. Students not eligible to attend an alternative school will attend school in a virtual school for expelled students. The VSBA language had, the superintendent is responsible for creating procedures to ensure that suspended students are able to access and complete graded work during and after the suspension. So where we have gotten this specific language in the policy in terms of, uh, students not eligible to attend an alternative school will attend school in a virtual school for expelled students, why, why do we have that specific language um, in the policy, and is Norfolk Public Schools providing that virtual school?
So I would ask Dr. Gibson to respond for that.
Thank you, Dr. Paul. Norfolk Public Schools is providing that virtual school, and those students who are currently expelled are enrolled in virtual school where they're able to continue their education. This particular piece was added because we have to ensure that the children continue their education.
Right, I, I understand the language. So what's the, is the virtual school separate from the DSA and the online learning that we've been talking about?
Um, yes, it is, because the child's records are housed at, in the alternative setting. But when we return face to face, that student would not attend Madison, that student would continue virtually and receive his work or her work from the teachers at Madison, but they would not actually report to the building. But they would still receive their education to make their progress.
So, s- so just so I'm clear, this is a al- alternative school, virtual alternative school uh, only for expelled students that Norfolk Public Schools is operating, um, via, via Madison teachers.
That, that, that is where their names are housed, um, while they're expelled, yes. And they are still receiving the Virginia-approved state curriculum, and they are being taught by the staff at Madison who are certified, or who are, if they're not contracted teachers, then they have enough degree study to complete uh, uh, to work as teachers.
S- so does that mean that there is not an in-person option for, uh, for those students?
At this time, expelled students do not have an in-person option, they have a virtual option. If they are on a long-term suspension, they have the in-person option.
Yeah, so, so I would recommend that the policy, um, I think the language that says that, um, basically, the, the VSBA language that says the superintendent can create these methods gives flexibility, whether it's virtual, in-person, hybrid, or whatever it is that superintendent feels is appropriate at the time. I think if we put in the policy that it will be virtual, then that, uh, potentially restricts us from offering, uh, other options beyond that, if, if we determine that that's, that's a, a need for students.
So, Jordan, we're gonna take another look at that one, if, if the board doesn't mind, um, give us an opportunity to, to review that policy again, please.
Okay, and, and then my, uh, my last question, so in the, in the current uh, student code of conduct, uh, what do we have in the current twenty-twenty-one uh, student code of conduct for some of these policies that, um, we've yet to act upon? for some of these policies that um, we've yet to act upon um, that need, I guess, may need to be in the, in that code of conduct?
I think the writing in the current code of conduct reflects what's here. I'm going to pull it up for you. It should be on the website.
And I think, and just kind of thinking about it, even if it's not, but I'm hoping that it does. Um, the board did vote on a resolution, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Cloud, that um, allowed us uh, with some of these policies to give us the additional time to put them in place.
Oh, yes, but also that, the, the particular section you're talking about, that it was changed by the General Assembly. So it became law on July first, and you had to follow it regardless of your policy. Now, that's not, you follow it, uh, the init- the first sentence, the part that Mr. Jordan is, is talking about is not in the statute. That was an addition uh, where it describes, where it talks about the virtual academy.
You talking about virtual academy?
Environment that you have to allow students the ability in these cases to continue their education. That was added to the statutes regarding suspensions and expulsions.
Yeah, right, so I'm just trying to make sure that, was trying to get a sense and of how we have done what Mr. Cloud just kind of basically said, those things that uh, the General Assembly required by law and we're still working on in policy versus those things outside of the law that are um, our, our wish and desire and how that, how that has been, been pulled together. And if the answer is, we did everything we need to do that the law required, and then we'll do an amendment to the code of conduct, I'm fine with that, I just wanted to get clarity if that's what we have done.
Right, and I believe we have, and in fact, uh, although, you know, I, I don't have the code of conduct in front of me, I did discuss it with uh, Ms. Hamel, uh, Ms. Hamlin and shared with her uh, all of the significant changes regarding the things addressed in the code of conduct, a- as well as the changes that eventually were going to have to be made to the policies. And she was involved in reviewing J G D Z uh, as well.
I thought so. Mr. Jordan, I, I know you said that you had, you written these items. Uh, my, I know my colleague, Ms. Bassin, on the Policy Committee, um, and I know Dr. Paul and Dr. Gibson. Um, you know, if you could just email them to, I know that we have another, I think we've got a Policy Committee meeting before we have our next board meeting. Um, and that, you know, Ms. Bassin, if you could probably take them out of consideration at the time and bring them back.
Yes.
Yeah, yes, I did them as uh, annotations in Board Docs, I'll print them, save them as PDFs and send them to you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Any other questions or concerns?
Okay. Anything else about policy? We good? Okay, thank you, Dr. Birdsong, for reminding me that I skipped number seven. Thank you, Doc, uh, Dr. Paul for your presentation and our Policy Committee for your very diligent work. I um, just want to let everyone know that our Policy Committee has been meeting more than once a month just to get caught up, and so I just really appreciate you getting all of this in order. Okay, now, um, so moving on to number nine. Future agenda items. Ms. Smith, go ahead.
I can't remember the timeline, but Fairlawn Elementary. Uh, can we get an update on that in terms of how long it's intended to remain open and when we expect to move that school over to Lake Taylor School? And then the whole plans with Lake Taylor School, um, and then the returning of getting any Fairlawn, Poplar Halls, and any other schools to the city? Like the whole from beginning to end, can, can we have some type of presentation on that?
Okay.
I can't remember what the, the plan was, I'd have but I do know that it was a certain time period, and now I'm not sure where we are in time.
That, Dr. Martin, it, it might be helpful if you share with the board some of the upcoming agenda items that um, that we discussed with Dr. Birdsong in terms of upcoming meetings, so people have a sense of what we're, what we're placing on the agenda based upon the requests we've received, so they can help us fill in any gaps that we may have, have missed thus far.
Okay.
And, and I'd just like to say that I made this request already, so I'm hoping it's already on the agenda. And Ms. Smith, we were scheduled to move the Fairlawn K one, K two kids to Lake Taylor next fall, and then the Easton kids moved to Fairlawn at the same time, so that we could um, be closed down, the, the, the old falling apart Easton School. That was what our plan was. So I, I'm, that's why I asked to have the um, the finishing of the, getting the building ready for Mr. Fraley, who has his team over there working on it now, so that that building's ready for the little kids to come in. How we doing with those restroom, those restrooms, Mr. Fraley?
So, I, I'd like to respond to that, please. Um, so to be clear, um, i- in terms of the Easton piece, um, did the, did the board actually vote to close Easton?
Yes, that was all part of the two-year plan. As we, we held, we even held community meetings on it, and that's why we did not move uh, the littlest kids to Lake Taylor this fall as originally planned, but we postponed that move into next year because one of the parent requests was to give it another year. That's why we have the two-year gap between that move, but yes, we did. That should be on schedule and ready to go.
It looks like some other board members don't recall the Easton piece. I, I do um, realize that we've had discussions about um, moving uh, the children to Lake Taylor, which is on schedule and um, Mr. Fraley and um, Danny Johnson and team, they have been working very hard to stay on that schedule. However, I, I do believe, Ms. Campson, that the board hasn't voted to close Easton. I remember there were a lot of parent concerns around that issue, and I, I don't recall that the board specifically voted to close Easton.
Well, perhaps we can check because that school is in poor shape, and that was the whole point of moving them to Fairlawn, which is in much better shape, and in addition to its location and everything, it's a, it's a better maintained, better conditioned building to put those little children in than the one they're in now.
I hear you, I'm just, all, all I'm saying is that I'm not sure the board voted to, to move in that direction, that's all I'm saying. And I, I'm not saying that I disagree with you at all.
Okay, um, so I'm looking through my notes for, um, I have, what I have is I have a list of the um, future agenda item requests, and then I'm trying to fit them into our future agendas. So, um, right now, for the October so I do have the Lake Taylor update on here, I just want to reassure you.
Oh, thank you very much for including that, I appreciate it.
Um, and I always have to look at the date, because I never know what date it is. Seventh, so for uh, to, October twenty-first business meeting, um, Mr. Jenkins is going to share with us a financial update, including our um, revenue sharing formula, and we are also I'm going to elect our V S B A delegate. And um, and then I believe Mr. um, Sir Jordan and Mr. Clayton are working on the resolution.
We'll have it ready, yes.
And no, no one's moving, so.
Mr. Clayton gave us the resolution, we're working on getting in the family, getting it done, getting it printed and all of that.
Okay, okay, and then, um, so after that is our November fourth work session. We are going to get in, um, we're going to, we're, that, that one, we're focusing on our accountability plan discussion. Um, let's see, and then at our looking at my notes. Oh, um. Some items that I have that we um, oh, and I've also, um, so we are going to, we're going to discuss our, our budget priorities in November, uh, legis- you know, approve our legislative priorities. And um, let's see, budget, so we're really, we're going to get a budget timeline in November. Continue to discuss policy matters. And that's what I have here. And of course, oh, I'm sorry, one more item is our superintendent's evaluation discussion after today. What I was thinking was that um, we'll do that after our accountability plan. Because what, our discussion around our accountability plan is going to inform our discussion around the superintendent's evaluation and prepare us for the formative um, evaluation in January. Ms. Smith, did you have something? Ms. Bassin, go ahead.
Um, yeah, so, so I was going to ask about that, so the accountability plan discussion will also involve goal setting for the upcoming year. That's, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, and then um, I, you know, as we've talked about before, I would like to, especially if November fourth, depending on uh, you know, our discussion on October twenty-first, to just have that placeholder of our, our reopening reopening of schools as a placeholder for every meeting, you know, to get, to receive an update. So I just would like to keep that at the forefront, and a question I have is, are we, um, you know, I've asked, and it's kind of been moved and moved, um, you know, over the last, I think, eighteen months or so that I've asked about this, but our specialty programs, um, typically we would be having some sort of an open house, um, you know, in November. And um, you know, I was just curious if there are still plans, uh, you know, what our plans are around that, and, you know, we don't have to get into it right now. But um, just a, a quick update on that.
Okay.
You know? Be great.
Anyone else? Ms. Campson? I have this question, Ms. Campson, you have done an excellent job unmuting yourself today.
Thank you, even if I've been a little slow. All right, the school board, the Norfolk School Board establishes working committees, such as the Policy Committee, that we heard reporting out at both our last and current meetings, to put in the many hours of work needed to create, revise, and update information and develop recommendations that they then, then take back to the full board for discussion and action. Oh, sorry, I'm controlled breathing. This standard procedure was implemented by the board to create an accountability plan working committee to write an updated five-year school board accountability plan during the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year. When completed, the working group brought the new plan to the entire board for discussion, revision, and action. The plan was fully implemented during the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. This five-year plan has both absolute goals and annual benchmarks that must be reviewed, discussed, and updated at the end of each school year to ensure that annual benchmarks have been met and that adequate demands and that adequate progress is being made toward final absolute goals. Due to the many demands caused by the ongoing pandemic, this important work has been postponed and is now three months behind schedule. To move this important work of the Accountability Plan Working Committee forward, I would like to make this motion. Whereas accountability planning resulting in student success is the prime directive of a school board. Whereas in twenty eighteen, the Norfolk School Board established an accountability work group to work with members of the school board and superintendent's administration to review and bring forth a new board accountability plan for discussion and action. Whereas, even though we are amid a pandemic, ensuring student success and being able to measure said success against established goals and benchmarks is vitally important. Whereas, the board should maintain its agreed-upon practice of completing work group committee work during their work group sessions and bringing forth recommendations to the school board for discussion and subsequent action. Now, therefore, be it resolved that school board maintains its commitment to academic accountability by continuing the work of a school board accountability plan work group. Be it further resolved that two members of the school board be assigned by the chair to such work group and those members of the superintendent's administration deem necessary in completing the review and update of the school board accountability plan. Be it further resolved that the school board accountability plan work group presents an updated school board accountability plan for discussion and sub- and subsequent action during the November work session. Moved by Lauren Campson for Board Five member Norfolk School Board.
I'm just a second.
Okay, discussion? Ms. Bassin, Mr. Jordan?
Um, I, I share, as I'm sure others do on the school board, share uh, Ms. Campson's passion for um, the accountability plan and not so much the plan itself, but for ensuring that we are being accountable uh, to ensuring the success of our, for our students. Um, I do, for that reason, you know, I, I, you know, and I've said this before, I wholeheartedly believe that um, it should be uh, an area of focus, of course, but I do believe it is a policy of the whole, I mean, um, a work group of the whole and not a committee of, you know, a small group of the board. Uh, I do think it's different than some of our other committees. And I would like, uh, you know, as we work together to build our relationships, build trust among each other, um, I do believe that as a governance team, that it should be a committee of the whole. Um, but I do agree with uh, having some uh, focus and attention being placed on it uh, because it is critical, you know, now more than ever, although I do think we need to relook at and reexamine some of the goals in there. Um, but um, uh, I would, that's, that's what I say, I have to say, I think it's a committee of the whole. Thanks.
Well, what I'm going to, I'm going to make comment, so um, so the plan is for, well, um, actually, Dr. Birdsong is, her administration is already working to update the accountability plan um, at, we had, so, I mean, I just want to say this once more, I really appreciate all of the work that went into putting the plan together between um, you, Ms. Campson, and you, Ms. Bassin. Um, I know that was a tremendous amount of work, a lot of hours, and um, and, and so I, I appreciate everything you did. And I, I know that Dr. Gabriel had, had said that at, at the time whenever we, we went through this as well. Um, and it, and it really set us on an, on, gave us a nice, um, it's a great plan and set us on, you know, really good path, um, and to give direction to our um, our, our district and holding us accountable and, and, and our administration accountable as well. Um, but that said, once it was proposed, the decision was made to now take this and, and um, and have it updated by the administration, but the discussion would be a board, um, around the updates would be a, as a committee of one, and that would be the school board, which is um, why I thought it was important that we use this next step to work through the accountability plan updates once they're, once they're done by the administration, which would, you know, be prepared for our work session on November fourth, that we, again, this is um, an opportunity for us to re- revisit those um, those uh, benchmarks and, and items as a committee and have some very important discussions around, around them, particularly in a time uh, of COVID where um, some of the items, some of the categories are not available to us and to really hear from the administration on what those uh, district benchmarks, for example, and uh, uh, assessments are going to be in lieu of some of the items such as the S O L scores that we were unable to um, to have from last spring. And again, I think it's a wonderful exercise for the board to then prepare us for our superintendent's evaluation and having the discussion as a governance team. Prepare us for our superintendent's evaluation and having the discussion as a governance team. Around what those priorities look look like in in current times and how we are going going to. Um, proceed with her evaluation and the indicators. Um, that that in putting indicators in place for us. And of course, then from that, the next step would be the administration's um strategic planning. And so that's why I think it's it's really important that this, the eight of us work together on these items. Moving forward and and not that it would be uh one or two people of the board. Uh, doing that, yeah, I really think the process matters, I guess, is what I'm trying to say here. Um, and it's not just in the hands of two to present to us, but actually guided. Um, an administration-guided uh exercise for the for to strengthen the governance team. And to bring.
Yeah, may I respond? Since it's my motion.
Yeah, you should have been able to speak first as they make every.
Yeah, I thought I was supposed to speak first.
Yeah.
Since we're talking about process. So may I respond?
Sure.
This school board creates working committees for all of the things that they consider the most important. The policies that we just looked at, that's a work committee that does hours of work. I mean, they've done hours of work on that. The facilities committee does, work committee does the same thing. This accountability plan is as important as they are. It needs the hours and hours and days. To be to be revisited each year and revised and updated, just like all of the policies and everything else does. It's too important. And to me, this is a matter of a commitment to accountability and the willingness to put the work and the time behind it. Talking about it for a couple hours and 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 a full board meeting is the same. Would cut it like if we had done this policy. All these policies that went through, it takes that much time to evaluate what's happening with your accountability plan. I know because I've done them for years. And we used in in our schools, we did them twice a year, and that was taken over and done by the leadership team. Which had representatives from each grade level and then brought to the whole faculty during a faculty meeting. That was the same procedure, basically, that you use here on this board. And any and anything you consider really important and you're willing to put the time and the work into. And that's done by two members with the rest of the work committee. No different than this is. And then it comes, they don't make the decisions, they make the recommendations, they make sure all of the information has been updated, which it should have been done in the summer. And yet, here we are, and now it is October, we are just finally getting to this, even though I brought it up at every single meeting. And I'm disappointed at the lack of focus on accountability by the board that this reflects. And that's what I was trying to bring the attention to. It needs, it needs to have the same time of time, the same amount of time. And focus that anything that's a priority and that's important to the board, and right now it doesn't seem that it does. We wouldn't be this far behind because a school year should never start. Should never start without everything updated and changes and revisions made. And that's what we've done. The school year's going, pandemic or not, the school year's going, and we are sitting here. And November, the school year will be a quarter over. Twenty-five percent of the year will be gone without anyone looking at anything. Yeah, we don't have SOL scores, but we have a lot of other stuff in there. It's not just about SOL scores. And this is where we hold everyone accountable. And I have no idea what happened. I don't have any of that data now, and I know that I, Lauren Campson. Hold myself accountable for anything that happens in this district. And especially in regard to academic achievement and safe and secure buildings. And so I'm disappointed, and I'm very disappointed that the chairman of the board would do with such an open to excuse that position. To go against what anyone else and try and influence their decisions. But at this point, I just call for a vote on the, I I called a motion to a vote.
Well, I actually get to rebut that. Um, number one, I do appreciate your passion for this project that you spent a lot of hours on. I recognize that. And um, number two, I do want to point out that our most important, our biggest policy is actually our budget. And that is handled through our administration, through their expertise. And the accountability plan along the same vein is to be updated by our administration as previously decided. Um, and also, since you brought it up. I agree that this should have been an agenda item back in our retreat in July. But instead, we had a discussion about the history of the naming of our schools. I did not create that agenda, but I have since been trying to find the appropriate time. And that we can give full attention to our accountability plan, and November fourth was the first opportunity that arose.
Well, you made your decision about accountability and I made mine. Could we please, I call for the vote.
Ms. Tanner? You make the call.
Okay, Basine? Yay. Campson?
Voting for accountability for all, yes.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Smith?
No.
Martin?
No.
Okay. And um, with that, the meeting's adjourned.